Good evening, everyone. It's about five minutes till seven. We'll begin the meeting in about five minutes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of seven o'clock. Welcome to the Lexington City Council Work Session. We're meeting electronically again so that we can all be safe and work towards being COVID free. With the meeting called to order, I'd bounce pass it to Jim for update and discussion on the VDOT property, which is the mission this evening for our work session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and all of those who are with us tonight. I'm going to move through this presentation a little slowly and pause to allow you to ask questions. So please do feel free at any time to ask any questions that you feel like you need specific information about. We have with us tonight. Arnie Glazer, our director, our director of planning and Jake Adams, our director of finance. Unfortunately, Jeff Martone, our director of public works, who's the real expert on this, could not make it. He is off until the, until next Tuesday of next week. Anyway, Janie has put up the preliminary plat for you. All of you are familiar with this property. There are four parcels described on this property, parcels one through four. And background has an error in it that I didn't catch, nor did anyone else. It's not point seven acres. It is seven acres. So that little period or dot there should not be there. It's approximately seven acre parcel. We all know that our goals are to put uses on this property. If we should be able to acquire it and get a developer to be interested, that will benefit this community and also create more tax base for the city as well. And if you would please, if Arnie or Jake could interrupt me anytime and correct any errors I make or add anything that I might miss, I would ask that you please allow that as well. All of you are aware that the property was appraised last fall both by the state and by the city. Some differences in the appraisals, of course. One of the reasons there is differences in the appraisals is because if you know parcel one is actually Waddell Street. Parcel two is an unnamed street that's maintained by the city. BDOT had those parcels appraised as well, and we did not. We won't be able to use those parcels. We don't believe for development, but we're going to still need access of Waddell Street and probably on that parcel two as well. Although there may be options for that. We all recall that February of this year, we had a workshop, a group workshop where about forty people got together. We reviewed the types of uses that could be placed on that property. Not everyone agreed, but the overwhelming use that came out of that was a residential use of some sort with a mixed commercial use perhaps. A residential was clearly the preferred option for the site. Does anyone have any questions about the preliminary plat or any of the background? Okay. Now, one thing to point out at this point is that if we were to acquire the property this fall and put it into the hands of developer, we believe it would take up to two years before it would be developed, developed fully. And that's important later on. The other thing to note here is that the estimated flow from apartments on that site or residential on that site would be about one hundred gallons per minute peak flow. That's what we've seen estimated from our consultants and our engineers. Of course, we started then this spring doing a phase one environmental site assessment report and followed up that report with a phase two environmental assessment. That report, the phase two was received on June twenty second, just a little over, not quite a month ago. And there were findings on the phase two of very low levels of benzene, ethyl benzene, xylene. And per the DEQ requirements, technical manual, any detectable levels had to be reported to the DEQ. We reported those to, we've sent the report, I should say, to VDOT, to Hubenjorn, to VDOT, you, you've been insurance with the Department of General Services. And then VDOT sent the report on to the DEQ immediately on June twenty third. And Mr. Hubenjor with DGS has been in contact with Arnie and myself several times in the last several weeks for an update. I should say, Arnie and I contacted Mr. Hubenjor. It wasn't until two days ago that Mr. Hubenjor responded. And you'll see that he said VDOT is working on a response back to the city on the phase two report. Hopefully, the response will be sent shortly. The next step will be determine what VDOT is willing to do with parcel one and parcel two, Waddell Street and the unnamed road. And then we can determine if we want another update on the appraisal. Thoughts or questions, comments? One of the things that was questioned early on was the capacity of the sanitary sewer in that area. And because of that, we had a hydraulic capacity study conducted. That study was completed in April of this year. And they had several deliverables with that. With that study, and Janie put on one of the two maps that are available that show the sewer shed for the study. If we were to look at the other map, you could see that there is a strong yellow line in the upper part of the map. And that is, and that goes to the lower part of the map from the center up, center down. And if you look at the upper portion of the map, you can see the school up there and you can see Woods Creek. Where, and so the Sarah's Run, Sarah's Run Sewer Shed starts just to the left of the school and extends downward. And all of the pink area is in the sewer shed. That was the area that was studied during the hydraulic study. And some of the, some of the deliverables for that study included the map that you're seeing, which is a physical survey of the Sarah's Run Interceptor. And then it also included five locations where the interceptor and the sewer shed was monitored over a four month period. And during that period, we had an estimate of dry weather system infiltration, an estimate of wet weather rainfall intrusion, and then the development of a hydraulic grade line. And as we go down here a little further, I'll try and explain what those things are and why they're important. Does anybody have any questions, though, about the area itself? Okay, infiltration analysis, of course, is the groundwater that may get into the interceptor or the sanitary sewer in the system itself, within this sewer system shed. And you can see when they conducted the study that potable water consumption in the area ranged from five to sixty seven gallons per minute. That is what was metered, used by our customers, and then, of course, it would flow most of that back into the sanitary sewer, all within the Sarah's Run Sewer Shed. And the metered flow, however, in the sewers showed from thirty to one hundred and eighty gallons per minute. So that means groundwater infiltration accounted for approximately fifty two to sixty three percent of the dry weather flow within our sanitary system in the Sarah's Run Interceptor system. So if you look at that and what we're paying at Maury Service Authority, that's about two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars annually that we're paying to treat groundwater. The system is old. We've got a number of areas we know that are problematic and water gets into the system therefore. So that was the infiltration analysis. Now, the intrusion analysis basically measures how much more water will be put in the system in wet weather conditions, that is, from rainfall. And I'm going to stop again and ask if anybody has any questions.
I'll, I'll wait till the end. Go.
Okay, very good. In the intrusion analysis during that four month period, we did get a couple of rather heavy rainfalls. One was between, or they were between point eight one and two point seven two inches. Now, the maximum measured wet weather flow range between one hundred and ten gallons per minute and one thousand seven hundred and forty two gallons per minute in the Sarah's Run Interceptor. And that is accumulative water that flows from all of the smaller lines that you can see on the map that all then flow into the stronger yellow line that is the Sarah's Run Interceptor. And all that drains into the Wood Creek Interceptor ultimately. So if you recall that the dry weather flows range between thirty and one hundred gallons per minute, the peak factors, that is, the ratio of the wet weather flow to the dry weather flow ends up between three point seven and nine point seven. So at any point in time, when there's a significant rain event, it's between three point seven times as much as the dry weather flow up to nine point seven times as much in that interceptor because of the rain intrusion. Now, rain intrusion can come from a number of locations or places. Some people's roof drains drain into the sanitary system decades ago. That was a common practice. There may be some street drains that also drain into it for the same reason. Those practices were more common forty, fifty, eighty years ago, and some of this system is up to a hundred years old, I'm told. And so we then get a number of, significant number of gallons of rainfall that goes into the system when it's, when we have those wet weather conditions. Now, if you look at that, that estimate is that fifty four thousand gallons, or excuse me, fifty four thousand annually is the cost to treat that rainfall intrusion into our system. It's a smaller amount because it's not every day. During the three hundred and sixty five days a year, we always get groundwater into the system. We only get the rainwater into the system when we get those heavy rain events. And so, you know, I'm not sure how many days a year we're used to calculate that cost. They probably looked at our average number of heavy rainfalls and made that calculation. But obviously, again, it's much less because we're not talking a three hundred and sixty five day, everyday cycle. Mr. Smith, you had some question perhaps?
I guess a question on the infiltration analysis. Is there, I know we've had some issues with unmetered water recently, and is there, is there a possibility that there's some unwatered or unmetered water going into the Sarah's Run Sewer Shed that is not, you know, it's just bypassing the meter and going back into the sewer shed?
Well, I wouldn't say that we could rule that out, but I'm guessing it would be a very, very small quantity. I'm not aware that we've got any significant customers there that have bypassed their meters, but I guess that's always a possibility. You know, it'd be hard for us to pick that up.
Hey, Jim, I have a question for you also about the infiltration. So the two hundred and sixty eight thousand annually to treat groundwater. Is, is that the that is the amount that we're overpaying, not two thirds of that? Anyway, that's what I'm trying to figure out. You said that fifty two to sixty three percent of dry weather flows at each meter site. So if we were to fix all the infiltration issues, would we save two hundred and sixty eight thousand annually or would we save two thirds of that? I'm just trying to figure that out.
The fifty two to sixty three percent is the percentage of the flow that is in the pipe from groundwater intrusion. And that is equal to two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars annually. That's an approximation, an additional cost that we would not pay if that infiltration was not there.
I hate to ask this, but is Sarah's Run particularly problematic or is that kind of emblematic of everywhere in the city?
I, I think many of our areas are very similar. My understanding is we really didn't do much for decades with sanitary sewer line replacement. Of course, the main interceptor on Woods Creek was just replaced and we're in good shape there. But, you know, Jeff Martone tells me that, you know, we have the same problems in many areas of the community. Now, there are some newer areas specifically in this sewer shed outside of the city where those lines have just put in, put in the last twenty, thirty years where new homes have been built, et cetera. And we'd have less of a problem there, of course. Other questions? Now, the hydraulic capacity grade line analysis, I needed some explanation of that. Essentially, what that is, is an analysis of starting at the top of the Sears Run, excuse me, Sarah's Run Interceptor. Where would the water be elevation wise? And then as it flows down through the interceptor, what is that line, that elevation where the water tops out at throughout the interceptor? And what we're trying to measure there is to establish at what elevation at each manhole or at each measured system along, measures spot along the system, the water would overflow the system. So you have a line that starts out against smaller or an elevation that's smaller or shorter, and that goes up as more and more water flows into the system as the system goes downstream. Okay? And what we found is that during dry weather, the system operates fine. There are not any problems in that system. The pipes and manholes can handle it. There is no overflow to the system. And even with the future VDOT flow, we could still serve that flow in a dry weather condition. We wouldn't have any overflows of manholes or pipes anywhere or sewage flows into customers' basements or residents or any of that nature, garages, et cetera. However, when we look at the grade level or grade line analysis during wet weather conditions, it's predicted that the manholes between Jackson and Seller Street to the intersection of Welsh Park Place and Thornhill Road would go up by one to three inches. I want to, excuse me, feet, one to three feet over the manholes. Now, that's probably a conservative estimate, but nonetheless, a number of them will be threatened with a condition where the water, wastewater within the interceptor would flow out of the manholes. Now, when we add the flow in from the VDOT property, if you look at down below in this estimate, it's then estimated that five to ten feet of water above the manhole would be in the system at various points in the system, which is very significant, even if we were able to assume it's a conservative estimate. Obviously, we're in a position where we're going to overflow those manholes. So that's the important thing about this, the study, is does the study actually show that we can serve the property? And we cannot. The study recommends that no significant development in the sewer shed be done without additional investigation or improvement to the sewer shed. So it doesn't just mean the VDOT property, but it means any property in that sewer shed. Now, does that mean a home or two cannot be built? No. But if we had something significant, we'd have to do a calculation of the sewage flow. And the more it approaches that one hundred gallons per minute, the more apt we're able to say or have to say that we could not allow it. Questions?
Does the study or does Jeff indicate how much additional load that run or that shed can handle until we're running into some issues that you're describing? I mean, what more can we do there until we're really having a problem?
It's a good question. I did not see that. We can ask the folks who did the study if they can give us an estimate of that. Again, Jeff Martone did not give me an indication that that was data that he had seen or received, but certainly we can ask. Other questions? Well, to that one question, what can we do? The report recommended that we did a video inspection of the sewer shed, particularly the interceptor itself, and also smoke testing to see if that would point out to us where some of the problems lie and then what we could do to fix those problems. Public Works Utility crews did an inspection, video inspection of Sarah's Run this past month, or this month, actually. And we did see a number of cases, and this is important as well. Jeff Martone explained it to me that older sewers tend to sag in certain areas. They, the, the way they were installed was not as exact as we install those pipes today. The, the bedding for the pipes, there may have been no bedding. And so in certain areas, the soil sags under the pipe because of the weight over the years or because of water being flushed out under the pipes. And so the pipes sag in certain areas, and that will reduce the flow itself. And it also causes a situation where any video inspection, you know, if you've got water in a six foot or a ten foot sagged area of the pipe, you're not going to be able to see anything. So if there happens to be a spot there where there's damage or where there's leaks or cracks in the pipe, we could not tell. One of the things they did see, of course, during the video unfortunately, is that in many of the manholes, the lateral and the sub mains of the system, they can see clear water running into the Sarah's Run Interceptor. And this indicates that there's more smoke testing need, needed to find out where that clear water is coming from. Again, that's a sign of groundwater infiltration, also perhaps a sign of rainwater intrusion, depending on if you just had a heavy rain, of course. So we have not done the smoke testing yet, and that will begin this month later in the month. So we have not done the smoke testing yet, and that will begin this month later in the month of July twenty-seven. And it will last from seven to fourteen days. Our crews will be doing that work and the the amount of time it will take will depend largely on the weather. One thing uh. A factor of note is that when you're smoke testing, the smoke is harmless. It's not typical smoke. It's a chemical smoke that harms nobody. But because people sometimes have areas of their home, downspouts, garage drains. Maybe other areas of their home hooked into the sanitary system, smoke can come out of those drains in people's garages or patios. Or roof drains, and that will alarm people. So if you get calls, you may you may expect that and be ready. They're going to ask, why is this happening? What's going on? Because, you know, obviously, it's alarming at a certain level. So we've tried to indicate to people that that will occur through our ads in the paper and things, but not everybody reads those, of course. Questions, areas of concern or interest?
I have one question on the uh. Phase one and phase two of the Jackson Street projects for the sanitary sewer. Do you know, does, does that include an upgrade of the line from eight inches to twelve inches of the interceptor line?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Strong, I couldn't hear the last part of that question.
Does that, the, does the Jackson Street project include an upgrade of the interceptor from eight inches to twelve inches? In that area where it was saying it sellers and Jackson, it's undersized?
Right, right. I don't believe there is a um. Increase of the size of the interceptor. If it's necessary, one of the things we can do is line the interceptor with a uh. Type of liner that will both increase the flow in the interceptor because there's less resistance. Uh, and also would then uh. Fill any gaps in cracks in the interceptor itself. So you would reduce the amount of intrusion or infiltration. So I I don't think it's actually been engineered yet, but um, the two solutions are, as you said, increase the size of the pipe. Or line the pipe if the pipe has um. The structural ability to be maintained for a number of years. That will have to be tested as well. Is it a good pipe to begin with? It's a bad pipe will replace it. Other questions? So after we do the smoke testing, we'll have enough data to then say, what are the options available to us? Now, frankly, there are two options. I'll go after the low hanging fruit first. The easiest option, but the one that is not recommended is you can bolt down your manhole covers and install backflow preventers. It does work. It is not recommended. It would be a short term option at best, and also we would combine it with continued work at stopping the infiltration and the intrusion, of course. That we're finding in the smoke testing. We could actually go out to those areas where the smoke came out of people's. Patios or people's downspouts, and they'd have to disconnect those from the sanitary system. We'd also go out to areas where we saw. Pipe that may be broken or sagging or have um. For whatever reason, water, groundwater intruding into the pipe, and we would fix those areas as well. Now, we're unlikely to find a large problem. So that means we'll be over many months or many years fixing smaller problems that incrementally. Will make a difference to the flow, the infiltration intrusion into the system. Any questions on option one? Now, one thing I will add is is that. While we can put backflow preventers on individual laterals coming from houses and customers. During a period of heavy rainfall. A day, two full days of rain. Basically, that backflow preventer also then prevents the flow from in the house going out. So if it's for an extended period of time, as you use water in the house for whatever purpose, it backs up in your lateral. To the point where it can then overflow inside the home or the business of our customer. And that's one of the reasons, of course, that it's not a recommended practice.
So if if we bolt down the manholes and put uh backflows in the laterals. All that backup's got to go somewhere. Where uh, where would it go?
Well, actually, one of the things that happens, and I'm glad you brought up that question, is you have a line that is now under pressure. Typically, they flow by gravity, but when they flow downhill and you have no exit for them to go back up through the system. Then the weight of the water itself will push the water through the interceptor faster. You know, so. You know, you've got weight. If you have weight on on a on a stream of water, it'll go faster than just by gravity alone. So there is an engineering principle beyond the fact that you can't let the water out. The fact is, it now becomes a pressurized system to a certain extent, which increases the flow. Other questions? Option number two, of course, is the standard option we always see, and it's a very expensive option. And that is to uh upsize the interceptor or line the interceptor, replace it, do what we have to do. To make sure that system will operate throughout the Sarah's Run Interceptor system. Jeff Martin did an estimate of what that would cost, and it's just under two million and two hundred thousand, actually, two million, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's without the cost of financing and bond counsel and legal, should we decide to finance a project of that nature. Now, option one, I I failed to mention, we don't have a cost on that option yet. It would come down to, you know, basically, how many of the um check valves do we have to put in the system? We have to do an analysis, analysis of that to determine how many customers would be threatened, if you will, with an overflow. And Jeff tells me that's pretty easy to do, actually, because you know the elevations were up to what the water would overflow the system. And then you can look at the elevations, the building around that and determine where you need those uh. Check valves in the system in the laterals to make sure that um people's, you know, water doesn't back up into the people's homes. But the option number two is typically what we see. It's a bit expensive. They always are. Any questions about that?
Um, I just have one. I I I'm trying to understand whether upsizing the interceptor really gets at our in in infiltration and intrusion problem. Because I, I mean, that looks like it's worth about three hundred thousand dollars in cost a year to us. So I mean, if it did address those issues, that doesn't seem like a bad investment. But does, are are, do we have a reasonable certainty that upsizing the interceptor would solve those problems?
Oh, no, it would not. You're correct. I mean, again, if you look at the map of the sewer shed that Janie still has on the screen, the bold solid yellow line is the interceptor. But every other pipe in that system, which are sort of the the lighter shaded lines that go into the neighborhoods. There's infiltration, there's inflow, almost in every one of those, probably. And we'd, and that's where the smoke testing comes in is, you know, we would smoke test one sub shed of the sewer shed. And then see. How many places smoke would come up out of the ground to detect where we have a problem. We will, we would also, of course, continue to video as we went along because we could find again more. And we just videoed the interceptor, Sarah's Run Interceptor. But we we'd take video into those sub sheds as well and then see what we found in there as far as cracks in the pipes. Even pieces of pipes that have fallen out over the years, you know? Some of your terracotta clay pipes that have been in the ground eighty to a hundred years um can fail. So you're right. If we got rid of the I and I, there's some payoff for us down the road.
So I I think I saw in your thing that i- if if the I and I problem were substantially solved. Then we would actually have the capacity for development on the on the V dot property. Is that correct?
If we could solve it substantially, I believe that is correct. Yes, sir.
Well, you have to. Right. I'm trying to figure out if if a two million dollar investment, rather than upsizing the interceptor. If that investment were applied towards finding and fixing the infiltration problem, maybe that would be a better investment. Does that make sense, or?
It does. Yes, sir. It does make sense. We just, again, don't know if we're going to be talking about. You know, seventy-seven areas to fix or three hundred and seventy-seven areas to fix. We have no idea. And what it would cost in each of those areas. Some of them would be very minor. Some of them would be done at the expense of the homeowners. But it would take a number of, probably a number of years to to run those all down. You know, Jeff, Jeff and I did talk about it. I had the same thought you had. You know, could we just not fix those issues, which makes more sense because our system then operates more efficiently? We're not paying that additional cost, and he cautioned me that it's a long process.
How many, how many households does the Sarah's Run line serve?
I'm afraid I don't know that either, but that's a good question I'll have to ask. Of course, it's not just households, it's business or customers, probably.
Off in the school and and some restaurants, but the. The large majority of it is, is households. I wonder what the percentage of of water use of the business community is compared to the to the residential use.
Well, again, we can, we can check that. I wouldn't know um frankly, but we can try and check and see if we find out there. Look at some of those larger customers and subtract that water from the water that flows into the system. Because we did, of course, as we showed earlier, have a meter flow of water into the system. So we know how much water flows into the system or how much is used by our customers. Other questions? Now, going into financing, of course, we could finance through our normal means. And most of the time, the best way to finance a project of this nature is to uh borrow the money. And issue a bond. And we could do that for about two point three million dollars, which includes bond council, bond fees, issuance fees, legal fees, et cetera. And if you look at that, that would generate an annual debt service of about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And Mr. Ayers, that's back to your question of, you know, if we could eliminate the infiltration and inflow intrusion. We could create a. Savings that would equal that that debt service, if you will, or very close to it. Now, the other thing we have to look at technically is um setting aside money for depreciation. One of the things we didn't do in the past, one of the things most communities did not do, and that's why we were not able to find cash to fix these sewer systems. Decades ago, because we didn't set aside money for depreciation. It just wasn't a standard practice at the time. Now it is highly recommended because when you put that pipe in the ground, look at the number of years it's going to serve the community. And the replacement cost, and then you can calculate an annual amount of money to set aside for depreciation. And that amount would be fifty-five thousand dollars. And so you'd look at a total debt service or total payment for that system of two hundred thirty thousand dollars annually. Now, of course, again, we're not required to put aside that money for um. Depreciation, or we could put aside part of that money. Anything we put away is um. We're ahead of the game if we put that money away today and over the years. And we won't be in this situation or somebody else, other councils and other. Community itself won't be in this situation forty years from now when they say, what are we going to do with the Sarah's Run Interceptor? There'd be money in the bank and they could then replace it.
So the final. So I'm sorry, can I ask if 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 we weren't to develop the the V dot property? What is the effective lifespan of the Sarah's Run Interceptor now? Like, I mean, you said if we updated, it would be good for probably forty years. I mean, i- i- is the Sarah's Run Interceptor in a place where it has to be replaced regardless or up?
I didn't ask that question specifically, but I believe from what Jeff told me that we would be well served to replace the system. You know, would it, would it function for another five or ten years? Probably. But um, again, when you start looking at. The problems we're having or could have, when do you take action? Now, to your question, if we go down a little further in the presentation, it does indicate that we've looked at our projects and our CIP that we wanted to uh. Take on in the Diamond Hill Project and the Phase One and Phase Two of the Jackson Street Projects. Were listed in our capital investment plan as the projects we wanted to undertake in the next six years. So if we were to try and do something with Sarah's Run, we'd have to either perhaps delay one of these projects. Or take on more of a financial burden, perhaps a rate increase as well. I shouldn't say perhaps, certainly there would be a rate increase. To try and fit this Sarah's Run Interceptor project into the schedule. That's one of the decisions you would be faced with is, should we delay one of those projects? Or should we take on an additional financial burden within the next two to four years? So that we could um make improvements anywhere in that Sarah's Run uh system. So. But we could find financing. We could combine it with um one of these other projects like the Diamond Hill Project. Go to Virginia Resources Authority and financing financing is readily available. The other thing we have available to us that helps a little bit is we have three hundred thousand dollars set aside for our intrusion and infiltration. Uh, work across the entire system. Some of that has been allocated already, but should we desire, should you desire to move forward? There's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars perhaps that could be reached out and used for this project. Very small amount, but every little bit counts. Of course, when we replace this system, we would save some money uh for infiltration and intrusion. That we're currently using or paying to the Moore Service Authority. And as long as we keep looking at the system as a whole and going through it and making prayer repairs. And eliminating intrusion, eliminating infiltration, we would continue to save money. And of course, that would be a recommendation I would make as we, we clearly have to, we have to do that because the financial return is very good. Whether or not we can ever get to that two hundred sixty-eight thousand or fifty-four thousand dollar level. Uh, every repair we make, every gallon of water we keep out of the system is a gallon we're not paying to treat over at the MSA.
Did Jeff say how long a total system replacement would take?
For the interceptor itself, you mean?
Yeah.
He did not. But again, when we calculated it, if, you know, we could probably be done within a couple of years to match when the development would uh start. Or finish, I should say, at the V dot property, but we would also have to start right away.
Yeah, that that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we'd have to get engineers online right, you know, I say right away, it doesn't mean uh in August, but this fall. You have to make a decision. So unfortunately, that's where we stand at this point in time. Just as a few other updates, I sent you some documents on the environmental aspect of the property. Just yesterday and today, I got some further information from V dot and from DEQ. Indicating that they'd like some additional tests on some of the tanks. When the Phase Two study was done, procedure is to go down to a certain depth and measure any uh. Contaminants on the site. Uh, some were found very low levels that are not problematic, but it did cause DEQ to say. We'd like to see what's actually underneath the tanks because that's where it will accumulate in the highest concentrations. So V dot did reach out to us and say, would you be willing, city, to do anything more or cost share with us? And please consult with your um consultants. So we did consult or I did get in touch with Commonwealth Environmental Associates here in town, and they advised that um. You know, we really shouldn't do anything until we get that DEQ report because DEQ will specify exactly what they need or require. And V dot is. Estimating around the edges what they think is going to be necessary, perhaps. We need to depend or rely on what the DEQ tells us to do. And based on that, I I did respond to the uh, to DGS, Mr. Hubinger, that we're going to wait for that report to come out from DEQ. And then I would consult with him later. So those are the two updates I have for you. Basically, one is that probably the environmental might take a little bit more money. Although CEA did say, really, that's on V dot, they're going to need to pay for that. I'm not sure if um. That's a negotiating point with them or not. We can obviously put some pressure on some folks in the state government saying, you know, it is V dot's responsibility. And then the other thing that of course is that sewer shed really is in rough shape, should we want to proceed and try and um. Allow development like uh the scale we're seeing in V dot. allow development like the scale we're seeing in VDOT or the VDOT site.
Jim, at times we've talked about a stormwater fee to, to properties. Does that, would that come into play at all in this situation?
Stormwater fees are put in place so you can improve your stormwater system.
Right.
And divert that from other locations, whether it's out on your streets or out in somebody's yard or whatever. So it would indirectly help because some of that wet water intrusion that we see in our system today would then go down into the stormwater, uh, the waste, yeah, stormwater system, my apologies. So it would help incrementally, absolutely. It wouldn't be as good as return as the
Right.
INI improvements, of course, but it would help.
Just looking for revenue. I mean, I, I, I mean, it's just coming from a different source, still coming from the rate payers and property owners, but so, okay.
We do, we do need to, you've discussed it before as counsel, I know, put in place a stormwater fee at some point. So we can also start addressing that, addressing that stormwater infrastructure and some of the problems it causes or lack of infrastructure.
Jim, obviously this comes with no particular recommendation and certainly without our city engineer here to guide us through some of the, the details. It's a great update and wonderful information for us to contemplate and sink our teeth into, and I look forward to additional follow-up. Couple of questions for, I, I, I believe for our next session. With, one is what the impact of when the Timmins Group did their estimation of what should go on that property and highest and best use report, they didn't do it, but they helped us obtain that. I'm not sure that we understood the condition of the sewer and I wonder if that changes their perspective on what should be the highest and best use for that property. So I'd be curious to know what Tim Davy would suggest in looking at this issue. Looking at the appraised value, two questions. One, does this, the limitations with the sewer have any impact on the value since we're looking to buy it from the state? I would think that may have some, some impact on the price or would like to know why it doesn't. And then the idea of the two different appraisals, if I heard you correctly, government services is looking to get a new appraisal, I assume based upon a, a like size plot so that our, our appraisals are apples and apples as opposed to apples and oranges.
Yes, sir. That is true. When they take out the gross acreage that would include at Waddell Street and the unnamed street, it should, well, it'll reduce the acreage and should reduce the value of the property appraised value.
Right. And have we done any outreach with neighbors at this point or made sure they're aware of the discussions we're having and reports such as this with the water and sewer?
I didn't catch the last part of your question. I'm sorry.
Question was, have we reached out to our neighbors, adjacent property owners to be involved in these discussions? For instance, this work session to be aware of the, the sewer services?
I have not. No, sir. Good point.
Do members of council have any other questions regarding the material presented tonight, knowing this is arguably a down payment as it were, of the work to be done relative to the VDOT property, our decision to, to purchase it from the state and where we go from here?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one point. This is Arnie. And there was a question earlier about how many folks are being served in the Sarah's Run Sewer Shed and Jeff had shared with me this study. And it says here approximately 570 residential customers in the city and 13 from Rockbridge County does not make mention of commercial customers.
Thank you, Arnie.
Thank you.
Certainly having old systems makes for challenges, but good to be aware of this before we get a developer on the hook. Certainly when we start looking at terms and working with someone to develop the property, this is a significant item to contend with. And just to affirm, Jim, the, the roughly $2.2 million approximate price tag would increase the capacity. It would not fix INI and would not upgrade the system. It would just enlarge the system.
Correct. When you say it doesn't upgrade it, it does actually upgrade the amount of flow that it can take. But it does nothing more other than that. The interceptor itself will handle then the wet weather flow, the infiltration, et cetera, that we see in the system today.
Yeah, I would also just point out to, for your information, Jim, and, and council members who may not be aware, the city has a, a long practice of doing the smoking studies and pop, popping smoke through people's homes and having them alarmed at what's going on and finding out what's being dumped into the system, which has been eye-opening to new homeowners in particular. Any other questions on VDOT?
I would just like to comment that all of this level of infrastructure that we would be responsible for is contingent upon a developer putting in residences, apartment complexes. So, and I'm glad that I, you, Frank, mentioned the Timmins Group and what other alternatives there could possibly be if they were not looking at the highest, best use in regard to those types of residences. What other alternatives do we have before we actually start spending money?
Yeah, the $2.2 million could be a terrific investment, but we've got other problems and spending a lot of money depending upon the, the terms for the repayment.
Exactly.
Thank you, Marilyn. If there's nothing else from members of council, city manager, that's all you have to report?
Yes, sir. On this topic. Yes, sir.
Very good. I have 7:48, so we'll stand adjourned and look forward to convening our regular meeting at eight o'clock in approximately 12 minutes. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of eight o'clock. Welcome to the Thursday, July 16th edition of the Lexington City Council. Thank you all for being here and before move on with the agenda, point of personal privilege, just want to give a deep appreciation to Jenny Hostetter who gets our agendas out and our technology working. And still it amazes me that we were so fortunate to switch to a paperless process far from smooth, at least from my perspective. smooth, at least from my perspective, making the transition, but it's all been very, very smooth because the work that Janie has done over the past year, getting us up to this point when COVID hit and we started meeting virtually. If you all would please join me in standing and recite in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to
America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for all, liberty and justice for all.
Technological support and the good work. The agenda was distributed previously and I'm not aware of any changes or modifications from either council members or city manager. And hearing none, we will adopt the agenda as presented. Next item is citizens remarks and comments. I think I read in the news gazette that indicated we were not taking citizens remarks or comments. And I just want for the record to report that is not accurate. We anticipate hearing from citizens anytime they want to address council. Our process for doing so is it is a formal hearing and we invite people to come and speak and depending upon the number of people try and limit comments to three minutes. But we asked that people address council directly. Debate is prohibited and we ask that you speak clearly as we want all to hear if you have handouts or other materials that you wish to be distributed to council, we ask that you give those to the clerk ahead of time if possible. And lastly, I remind everyone that this is a public meeting and our meetings are recorded. With that, Janie, if you could assist me, I think we had a couple of people who were planning to zoom in and join us in speaking in person. Do I remember that correctly?
I don't see them yet in the participant box.
Okay.
We had Michael and Dale and both were notified and sent a Zoom link.
Okay, in the event that Michael Humphrey or Dale Pickering do join us, please alert me, otherwise we'll go into our practice that we've adopted during this time of virtual meetings. Anyone that wants to make a public comment, we ask that you, if at all possible, send in ahead of time and members of council will read those. They are present on the screen there and I would ask Marilyn to get us started, please.
The first one is from Tommy Ruff. He says, you all are wrong. Stop removing our heritage. We deserve a vote.
The second one is from Michael Humphrey and on the possibility that he might be joining us in a bit, maybe I should wait to read his, he might wish to read it himself, so I will wait on that and read it at the end, if that's okay.
That'd be fine. And next is Michelle.
Okay, let me just get this up on the screen. This is from Laura Brody for the Lexington City Council, just sending a note to say I support changing the name of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery to something more welcoming for everyone, though I feel the statue should remain because cemeteries and battlefields are appropriate places for Confederate monuments. Thanks, Laura Brody.
I have a message from Louise Ward. Dear Mayor Friedman and members of council, at your meeting last week, a group of young people from the city requested that you rename the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery and a number of streets. Their message was clear and it was correct. Lexington should no longer continue with these names. By doing so, we would be sending a message that we honor people who enslaved other human beings and that we dishonor our current residents, particularly those of color. In the past, we have promoted tourism based on venerating our Civil War history. That must stop now. It is not only, it not only shows insensitivity to the wrongs of enslavement, but it will discourage visitors in the present and the future. Civil War buffs will visit regardless of names, but progressive visitors will avoid our city if we do not change. We cannot change our history, but we can give additional information that shows an understanding of the hardships and consequences it created. It is time to move forward. We must stop honoring long dead people who practiced and encouraged behavior that we now know was wrong. Instead, we must move forward and show respect for all our residents, past and present, regardless of color. Please vote to change the names. Lexington should not be defined by long dead men who misunderstood humanity. It belongs to and will be defined by young people such as those who made the request to all our children and grandchildren. Thank you for your consideration, Louise Ward.
Dear Ms. Hostetter and Lexington City Council members, my name is Rachel Brody and I have been a resident of Lexington and Rockbridge County for 19 years. As members of the city council with the power to enact positive change on behalf of your exasperated citizenry, I urge you to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Rename it for Chi Huan Ho, the first female cadet to graduate from BMI, a local treasure like Sergeant Major Al Hockaday or Sarah Jane McDonald or activist and martyr Jonathan Daniels. Or just name it after everyone's favorite geologic formation. Even if the rock bridge collapsed on its gaping onlookers, it wouldn't do so much damage as those rotting degenerate generals. I was born in a hospital named to memorialize a racist and would prefer not to be buried in a cemetery named for the same. A sentiment shared by many. At present, this name serves as a literal signpost to anyone cruising down Maine that the city respects its white dead more than its black living. I am working full time and could regrettably not send this before the end of the workday and understand that anything sent after 5:00 PM will not be considered until next week. That's fine. We'll keep emailing. Sincerely, Rachel Brody.
From Stephanie Richard, we are residents of Lexington City and we believe the name of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery should be changed. We don't think there should be a subcommittee to decide whether or not to change the name, but rather to decide on the new name. And we think that name change should happen as soon as possible. Thank you, Stephanie Richard and Gabriel Leisure.
Next is from Lisa, Lysia Gates. When my family and I moved here almost 20 years ago. Some of it was due to the beauty. It reminded us of our home we had left and mostly due to the historical significance of the area and town. I understand with all the issues going on in the world, people are upset, concerned, et cetera. But where does it stop? Are we offended? Why Aunt Jemima pancake syrup, Uncle Ben's white rice, white bread, chocolate ice cream? Lexington, Virginia is a beautiful town. It is a historical town. Stonewall is buried in that cemetery. Are we going to desecrate his grace and move his, I think they mean grave and remove his headstone? Are we going to remove all Civil War headstones that honor those that served black and white? Are we going to remove and rename all the Black Cemetery in Lexington, tear down Stonewall's house? Then we need to close BMI. It started prior to or during the Civil War and would not accept blacks. So isn't that offensive? My point is, all of this is part of history. Yes, a very dark part of history, but history. Black tribes sold their own into slavery. White Irish were sold into slavery. By all means, yes, it was wrong, woefully wrong, but history. If we keep removing history, taking down monuments, renaming places and removing history from the history books after a few generations, no one will remember and history will repeat itself. History itself has taught us that do we close all Civil War battlefields? Do we close the Holocaust museum in Germany? We can visit the Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp as a reminder to never treat people that way again, just because they may or may not believe the same way we do or the skin color is different. Are we going to close the Civil War Museum on BMI's campus in Lexington, Virginia? Lexington, Virginia is a beautiful little town steeped in history. Tourists come here for the history, Civil War buffs, et cetera. I believe it is a sad, sad day and truly hope the council would not rename or remove statues from this town. Let them be a reminder, this, what happened during the Civil War slavery that we as a town people and Mario, never, never do this again and repeat history. Please leave them.
This message is from Michael Persley to the Lexington City Council. It is very disturbing to hear that city council is even considering renaming streets and even more so Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It seems to me each of you have better judgment than that. Although no, not a resident of the city, in the city limits of Lexington, I was born at Stonewall Jackson Hospital and have been living in a Lexington post office address my entire life. I even attended and was fortunate enough to be in the last graduating class of Lexington High School. Therefore, I consider myself to be a Lexingtonian by default. Renaming streets after the use of their names for so long in the town's history is absolutely ridiculous. Each name in town, I don't care if in downtown, on the outskirts, in the Diamond Hill area, or even by the colleges, has a unique history about them. One should not play the game of political correctness with these names after all these years. I honestly thought diversity and inclusion was just that, acceptance of all, not just pick and choose what best fits one's political agenda. I am totally against renaming any streets in Lexington. Each and every street has its own story to tell, the full story. Secondly, Stonewall Jackson Cemetery should remain named as such. It was done so as a memorial to one of Lexington's great citizens who did so much for his community, black and white, even up into his last days on earth. He saw fit that his donations were still sent back to the Lexington Presbyterian Church in support of the Colored Sunday School he started for slaves and freedmen alike. Many descendants of these very pupils live in the area and throughout Virginia. It went on to become prominent citizens and worked hard for what they had. The same pupils honored Jackson by donating monies towards his current gravesite and memorialized him in one of their churches. To rename the cemetery would be a slap in the face to these fine men and women who upheld Jackson because of his devotion to God and character. Sometimes I wonder if that same devotion has been lost totally in our community. Littleburn Downing School would not be what it is without that name. He was a pupil of Jackson. The First Baptist Church in Lexington has one of its, has as one of its first trustees, a black Confederate veteran. His name was Jefferson Shields and he was so proud of his services wearing the gray. He attended many Confederate reunions and functions and photographs of him reveal his many medals and badges, which he proudly wore in reverence of duty and sacrifice. I had the privilege and honor of marking his grave with a with a befitting memorial many years ago. He lies in the well-kept Evergreen Cemetery with countless other black Confederates and many of the community's black and colored residents. Are we to tear down or rename Littleburn Downing School next because of its name associated with Stonewall Jackson? Are we to tear down or erase the whole truth of First Baptist Church because of its first Confederate veteran trustee? I don't hear anyone calling for that as of yet, but I wonder if down the road, if the insanity doesn't stop, they will be next. Sometimes what happens in Lexington doesn't at least bit surprise me. There's a story to tell here, since there's so much anti Confederate sentiment and now even more so revealing anti American anything sentiment we all, we have all been witnessing. I'd like to share a small blurb about someone. Mr. Isaac M. Bannister was a member of the Confederate Rockbridge Artillery. He was from Colliars Town. He served faithfully with his fellow comrades until captured at the Battle of Cedar Creek in October, 1864. He was sent to that horrific prisoner of war camp, Point Lookout Maryland. Here he stayed for the rest of the war. Now General Lee surrendered April 9th, 1865 and the last general on the field did not surrender until late May. Mr. Bannister remained a prisoner of war in a Yankee camp until he was finally released on June 22nd, 1865. That was two and a half months after Lee surrendered. This faithful and diehard Confederate, no doubt walked home and continued to live as a farmer until 1920, when he died. His son was undertaker of his community. Bannister descendants live far and wide. Many live right here in Rockbridge County in Lexington. Families directly related to him and his wife include, of course, Bannister, Matthews, Long, Cooper, Merchant, Poindexter, and so on. You see, Mr. Bannister was a man of color. His military record does not note this. As so many men of color who served the Confederacy were not listed as such, but one thing is certain, this man of color was one of the last Confederate veterans to return home in Rockbridge. Go figure, I'll repeat. A black man was one of the last Confederate veterans to come home. My point here is this, everyone's life has a story. One side of the war was not better than the other to remember or fit to be tucked away or out of sight and mind. Because if we continue down this path shoving our ancestors away based on present day morals and values, then we are setting ourselves up for disaster. I doubt many of Mr. Bannister's descendants know his full story. I was fortunate enough to have his great granddaughter sit with me and approve a marker to memorialize his grave in service. And to shove any names with connection to the Confederacy aside and act like they don't mean anything is complete lunacy, hypocrisy, irony and hysteria. I sincerely hope you pray about the situation and pray hard. Just because everyone else is doing it, doesn't mean we should do it too. Lexington has always been respectful of all its history for as long as I can remember. It all deserves recognition and remembrance. Do not change the names of any streets of the cemetery. Sincerely, Michael W. Persley, Lexington, Virginia.
This is from Chris Shave. Dear council members, Lexington has been a part of my life for 30 years. First as a student at Washington and Lee and now as someone who visits Lexington several times a year, either as a destination or while passing through. Lexington is Lexington because of the historic figures who have called Lexington home over the past 250 years, including Stonewall Jackson and Robert E. Lee. Using the current turmoil in America to make radical changes to Lexington will have longstanding consequences to the city. I encourage the city to launch a dialogue to review the proposals that have been put forward by certain groups that are advocating for change. Listening to the inflammatory rhetoric tonight from those who are willing or those who are calling for change shows that while there are emotional arguments being made, it is not clear what the proposed actions will do to address underlying issues. I encourage the city to listen to not only the vocal advocates who are rallying for change, but also those who have called Lexington home for longer. History is both simple and complex. There is no need to act tonight. We should listen and then think and then act when all voices have been heard and not just those who are able to weigh in tonight. Sincerely, Chris Shave.
I have a message from Tish Vest. Hi, my name is Tish Vest and I live in Natural Bridge. Just wanted to speak up to let you know how I feel. Changing the names from our historic past and removing our statues will be detrimental to our community. We need to remember our history and do our best to preserve it. Many tourists come to Lexington to enjoy our historic journey. Thanks for listening. Sincerely, Tish Vest.
From Suzanne Townsend. Please do not rename any streets, cemeteries or buildings to remove names of Confederate heroes. It is our history and for many, for us, I'm sorry, for many of us, our heritage. Additionally, Lexington would lose a lot of tourism revenue. Stand fast.
A letter from John Vitale. I have a burial plot in Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Also, my headstone is in place for me and my wife with the date of death not yet inscribed. I opposed the change in name. I have many places where I can be buried, but chose that cemetery many years ago. Many other folks also have plots there and may have chosen it for the same reason, which in my case is my wife is a Southern Sum grad and I am a BMI graduate. My children thought Lexington would be a place they could go and go to and revisit the places we love so much. Should you go through with this change, I will be forced to sue the city council for an arbitrary decision based on fear as I see it. These changes have gone far enough. A hundred years from now, when the country is, is the renamed United Socialist Assembly, so as not to offend another liberal group. I only wish I was not 81 years old and had a chance to a location where real Americans live and be buried there. This is not my country anymore. Thanks to people like you all.
This is from Lindsay Scarf. Good morning. I hope you're gearing up for a healthy and blessed holiday weekend. I would like to offer my opinion on the debate going on in Lexington. Lexington has been a part of my, my life, my entire life, as my mother grew up there and my grandmother still lives there. Lexington is in fact a historical and special place. Tourists do come to see that history. History is not being erased when you reallocate statues and rethink street names. You are actually making history by showing that you care about all American citizens and that you are willing to join in the fight, the current fight for all citizens. When people travel to Germany, we do not see statues of Hitler on every street corner. They would find a statue of Hitler in a museum bow where history can be preserved. Just because Germany does not have statues of the Reich on every corner does not mean the history has been erased. History is taught through books and stories and museums and battlefields. There is no reason to glorify men that did their damn There is no reason to glorify men that did their damnedest to save slavery. Perhaps the leaders were fighting for additional things like besides slavery or perhaps since slavery is what they knew, they did not know better. The point is, we now know better. We know that Americans deemed black people as three-fifths of a human. That is demoralizing and wrong. So now we owe it to our fellow American citizens to recognize that wrong, that wrong, and work to make it better. New research on Lexington will surely uncover steadfast people that should be glorified through the statues while Civil War heroes move to the museums. We will always preserve and study history, but what do we want our children to see flaunted? Statues of men that treat black people as their property? Or statues of people that fought for justice for all? When you know better, you do better. Gratefully, Lindsey.
This message is from Hadley Elizabeth Hunter Hawks. To the Lexington City Council, Janie Hostetter and Mayor Frank Friedman. It is very upsetting to hear the city council is considering renaming streets and even more so Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Across the globe, a large portion of uninformed protesters have been vandalizing property that does not belong to them and not getting arrested for it. In addition to not being arrested for their crimes, we've also been rewarding them by giving them permission to decide what historical structure shall be allowed to remain where they currently reside and which structure shall not. This is teaching these protesters that their method is working and that they should continue to go around the democratic process and behave like bullies in order to get their way. As a millennial, I encourage you not to indulge their requests. Do not rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Renaming streets after the name after the name has been in use for so long is ridiculous. It bears no real basis in the arguments the opposition claims. If it did, we we would have been opposed to the name generations ago. This is a power play. That is all it is. Should this proceed forward to discussion of a vote, this needs to be a full ballot vote by every citizen in Lexington, including the people who have relatives resting peacefully in Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This is not a decision for the city council nor for the mayor, but rather the people themselves in the form of a vote. In this case, a vote by the city council alone would be equal to no vote at all. It is extremely important that this vote not be given preference to those who use Facebook and Zoom, which are primarily Gen X, millennial, and Gen Z women. There's a significantly higher number of women who use Facebook than men and even higher of women who routinely log in than men. Do not base any assumption on the overall perspectives of your community on Zoom meetings. That is automatically marginalizing the representation of your community. It is important to include every voice and make sure it is done offline in an affair democratic manner. I sincerely hope you think about this situation and think hard. Just because everyone else is doing it doesn't mean that we should do it too. Everyone else's decision will have consequences and repercussions and it is extremely important not to follow the pack. Do not change the names of any streets of the cemetery. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Hadley Elizabeth Hunter Hawks.
This is from Debbie Switzer. My name is Debbie Switzer and I have lived in Rockbridge County for thirty years. We moved our family here after we were struck by its beauty, history, and morals. It has been a pleasure to be a part of this community. I want to express my concern over a few folks deciding to change the name of the cemetery by where I have family and friends buried. Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery is where my husband and I will also be laid to rest. I oppose changing the name. I understand that a few folks might be upset that he was a general of the Confederate Army, but that does not define that man that he was. He didn't, he did a lot for this community and I'm upset that anyone would try to erase that. It is also his and his family's final resting place and I think he deserves better than this. The least the city council could do if they did so decide to change the name is to put it to a countywide vote. County residents have just as important stake in this as do Lexington city residents. Thank you for your consideration, Debbie Switzer.
A note from Lori Bruffman. Hello. I grew up in Lexington and graduated from Lexington High School in nineteen eighty-eight. I would hate to see the cemetery name changed, the streets names changed, and statues taken down. Please don't do that. I don't get to Lexington that much anymore, but consider it home. Lori Lautermuck Bruffman.
From Isaiah Ray. I recently saw a post going around a few of the social media groups I'm in regarding Lexington. Since the age of eight, I have most thoroughly enjoyed visiting this historical town. Its plethora of wonderful shops, restaurants, and museums have provided both an exciting and educational mode of vacationing and weekend journeying. And the cemetery being discussed has been at the forefront of those experiences. I've been to visit that grave well over thirty times. I've left almost as many peaches and lemons. Thus, when I read of the recent name change, I was significantly less than enthusiastic. Given that Lexington's notoriety is derived uniquely from Thomas Jackson, I think it is inane to remove the name of Jackson from his memorial and last resting place. I fear that if you continue down the conceptual road of council, council culture and tribalistic politics, we will lose much more than nomenclature regarding a cemetery. Respectfully, reconsider your asinine decision to change the name of a particularly pertinent resting place.
Jennifer Finan, VMI parent and homeowner. Please preserve the little town's history. It is rich in history and the past cannot be changed, but the future can be changed if we learn from the past. We have many war heroes that owned slaves, but they also have many wonderful hero qualities as well. Jen Finan.
Andrew McNeil. Dear Mayor Friedman and Ms. Hostetter. I'm writing this in response to possible actions by Lexington City Council to rename or remove historic items that are of the foundation of what America has become today. We are not a nation of sheep, but a nation of brave and honest people. When you know who you are, you may know what I mean. Let, uh, America is built on historical foundations. We have done more to help and advance the world in so many areas. One, why try to be like sheep and disregard what our forefathers did to make this country great? Stop erasing history and see this blind stupidity before it's too late and we lose our foundations and identity as Americans and relegate ourselves to a third world country. We lead the world, but your possible actions could diminish part of what we have achieved today. Thank you for taking time to read this message. No response is necessary. Sincerely, Andrew McNeil.
This message is from Carl Benner. Janie, as a graduate of VMI in nineteen sixty and a history major at that, I implore you to be resilient and firm in pushing back on these demands for renaming the cemetery and streets of your beautiful city replete with history which must, which we must maintain for future generations. My class will hopefully be holding our sixtieth reunion in October of this year and I hope to find the Lexington of my memories. Respectfully, Carl A. Benner.
From Diane Lisca. During my frequent visits to Lexington during my daughter's cadetship at VMI, our family is impressed by the town's historical preservation and charm. We have met many residents and businesses, business owners who reflect the town's hospitality. We are strongly considering Lexington as our next residence because of its environment. I am very dismayed and sad to hear some want to change the town's unique historical presence by renaming streets, removing historical markers, and changing the cemetery, home to many who defended the United States over the past two hundred years. A statue isn't meant to be worshipped or honored or feared. When we don't have reminders of where we've been, as the saying goes, we're doomed to repeat the past. Those who practice being offended by history are the most to be pitied because they choose to ignore the legacy history leaves us. Ways to be better in the future. I understand at a recent city council meeting, some younger attendees had their voices heard. I ask you to balance their voices without others, including Lexington's own, to maintain the rich educational legacy of your wonderful town by maintaining everything as it is. If there is something they want to add to the environment, consider that alongside with maintaining what's there. Very respectfully, Diane Lisca.
A message from Joan Harden. I hated this book and now I am living it. Joan Harden. Quote, "Every record has been destroyed or falsified, every book rewritten. Every picture has been repainted, every statue and street building has been renamed, every date has been altered and the process is continuing day by day and minute by minute. History has stopped. Nothing exists except an endless present in which the party is always right." George Orwell, nineteen eighty-four.
From Sharon Green. Dear Mayor Friedman and Ms. Hostetter. I am a Virginia native and proud citizen, fortunate to have deep family roots in this historic Commonwealth. I thank you for the opportunity to offer input into the council's decisions on any impending changes with respect to the city's connection to the war between the states. No one can deny the significance of generals Lee and Jackson to the landscape of Lexington. While historians and scholars will long be able to study Civil War battlefields and maneuvers under the direction of these two men during the war, there will always, there will always need to be a place in Virginia to know these men outside of the eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five narrative. I hope you will agree that their life stories encompass more than four years. Furthermore, I hope you will also agree that they will indefinitely remain men of great interest. I strongly urge you not to remove names or change references to Lee and Jackson. There will always be, there will always need to be a place to study how Lexington has been shaped by these men and the roles they played. There will always need to be a place to freely learn of their character and substance. There will always need to be a place that can lend balance to their place in American history. Let Lexington be that place. Let Lexington remain that place. Kindest regards, Sharon Green.
A letter from Bill Dillon. Dear City Council, today, July sixth, my wife and I were looking at homes in Lexington, Rockbridge County region. We stopped to view the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery to see the historical cemetery landmarks. While there, another visitor told us about the decision to erase the name of the cemetery. Not being from the area, we were shocked to hear that you had done this. We began to look up articles on the internet and learned about your liberal advocacy. We determined that the area is so biased towards a liberal left-wing agenda that we will look north toward Augusta County. We were prepared to live in the Lexington region, but having learned of your strong left-wing political views, we realized that this would be unwelcome, we would be unwelcomed in your neighborhood. It appears that your community has become so political, you will only welcome those of your own political views. We are disappointed by your unwelcoming political agenda, agenda, Bill Dillon.
Heather Hopkins Barone, and she had a petition attached. Dear Lexington, Virginia City Council, today is July fourteenth, twenty twenty, two days prior to your scheduled online meeting for Thursday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty eight P M. I would like to formally submit the petition from change.org as well as the comments from the supporters who request for the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery name to remain the same. I believe this will give you all adequate time to review the petition and comments. According to your website, city council's protocol is to submit your comments in writing rather than appear at our meeting. Per Governor Northam, the state of Virginia is now in phase three, which means that gatherings with a two hundred and fifty-person limit are permitted. Why are you continuing to hide behind closed doors and discourage the public from being seen and heard? How many of the elderly residents even know how to navigate and participate in an online meeting? I strongly urge you to not only review, but read the comments live from the supporters from the online petition at your meeting scheduled Thursday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty at eight P M. If you fail to do so, this will be considered discrimination towards your fellow citizens and residents which you are neglecting to allow to physically be seen and heard in person. On July seventh, twenty twenty, you posted an announcement on Facebook. Lexington City Council has decided to change the name of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. If you have any name suggestions for the former Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery, please complete the suggested survey. After reviewing the comments on your Facebook page, it seems as though the consensus is to keep the name as is. Are you going to disclose and make your survey results available for the public to review? If everyone is in favor of keeping the cemetery name the same, are you going to overturn your decision? Please note that due to your unanimous decision to change the cemetery name, several visitors and tourists have proclaimed not to visit or spend any money in Lexington. Our town is an historical town and that is why people come to visit. If you continue to change names, you are erasing history, therefore throwing away and discouraging potential revenue from the tourism industry. Do the right thing and overturn this decision and give it more thought. Let the citizens decide by taking it to ballot. A copy of this email petition results as well as the comments from the petition will be sent to the newspaper and our local news, news stations for review as well. Also, shame on you for taking down the name placards already at the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Sincerely, Heather Hopkins.
Uh, this message is from Sherion Struppler. It sickens me and it angers me that you're going to rename Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. This is wrong. It's a good thing his grave marker is on a privately owned burial plot and that his grave is privately owned. If not, you will remove that statue too and probably leave his grave unmarked. When I was in school and studied Civil War history, we were taught that Stonewall Jackson and Robert E. Lee were great Confederate generals. Now you want to remove all the traces of them. These men went from being great generals to evil men who don't deserve any type of recognition, all while just resting in their graves. They're probably rolling over in their graves. The Civil War was not just about slavery, but some people don't want to hear that. People need to be taught the truth about history. I am not racist. Slavery was wrong. Just because a person likes Confederate statues of a Confederate flag does not mean they are racist. I had at least five great-great-grandfathers who fought in the Civil War. They certainly were not fighting to preserve slavery. They didn't even own slaves. This renewed determination to take down Confederate statues and to change the names of schools, buildings, and streets that are named after Confederate officers started after the death of George Floyd. I am sorry about his death. It was horrible and wrong, but I cannot understand how a statue caused his death. Do you really think that once all our statues are down and places are renamed, that race relations are going to improve? Nope, it's getting worse, not better. I feel like my rights and feelings no longer matter and a lot of others feel this way. I am ashamed of how our politicians are handling this situation. Sixty percent of the Civil War was fought on Virginia soil. A lot of Virginia's history has to do with the Civil War, but that's being removed and or destroyed. Last year, we had friends come to visit from Michigan. We took them to Lexington. They enjoyed the town and the history. We won't be taking others there in the future. We live fairly close to Lexington, close enough for a nice day trip. That's not going to happen anymore either. There is a town in Ohio that has offered to take the statues that are being removed. It's very sad that a town in another state is willing to take our statues. There are no words to describe how I feel, but all of those who approve this name change should be ashamed. Shame on you all. I know this email will not make any difference as the decision has been made and I'm sure you don't care how I feel, but I wanted to express my feelings anyway.
From Ron Simmons. Dear sir, leave the heritage symbols the hell alone. It offends no one. Get over the pandering to the spoiled brats of the world. Our grandfathers died in the war, no matter the side they fought on. For you and your liberal city council to remove, rename, or any action to appease sensitivity of any group is a disgrace. Hopefully, someone in Virginia will stand up to stop you or maybe give statues of Stalin or Lenin, maybe Castro. Yes, sir, I am peeved off. Why don't you put, why don't you put name change to vote? Rather, six people deciding what happens to our history. I live out of state, but I am angry as hell with you people. Politicians should not decide the fate of history.
A message from Sheila Henzley. You just killed tourism and history in Lexington, Virginia by renaming the cemetery. You sniveling cowards. I hope your asses get sued by families of persons buried there. I personally will never spend another cent in your city. Shame on you low-life council members. You are pathetic.
From Audrey Waltner. As a voter and a constituent, I urge you to introduce and support the following resolution to not pass any gun control affecting local government buildings, parks, recreation, and community centers or permitted events, events, including adjacent streets or affecting the legal purchase, possession, or transfer of firearms or ammunition, even though a new state law allows for such ordinances. Here's the link to download the model resolution I would like you to support. There's a link to a uh, document attached. Please let us know what you are going to do regarding introducing and supporting this resolution. Audrey Waltner and Paul Baker.
A letter from Lionel Gregory. Gentle persons, as concerns the above, I am eighty-three years old. Sorry, I am an eighty-three-year-old native-born Virginian, raised, educated, husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and still residing and working in this wonderful Commonwealth. I urge this council to reconsider the important and emotional vote to remove the historical burial place of General Thomas Stonewall Jackson. My request is not couched in terms of my favor of a right or left position, nor is it, is a political issue, but falls within the words expressed in our constitution that provides the preamble, "We the people," rather than "We the Lexington City Council." Hence, we, the people of Lexington, Virginia, are denied their unalienable rights and equal justice in the Commonwealth. I request the council reconsider under the cause of equal justice of rights of the people to vote yea or nay on this issue. Respectfully, Lionel Gregory.
Mary Mayor. I'm gonna start my message with the fact that I no longer live in Lexington, but I do indeed have deep ties to Lexington. I grew up on Jordan Street, one of the few people who can say they were born in Stonewall Jackson's house, and I have three generations of family that are buried in the cemetery. I think that earns me the right to weigh in. I am sure you feel great pressure to adhere to the mass hysteria of name-changing and taking down statues, but I hope you can resist. I, like many, feel that it would be wiping out history, wiping out my history. Please stand tall and vote to leave the names of things as they are, and let them be living monuments to remember how we should act now, not how we did act. Sincerely, Mary Peyton Craft, Mayor, Hershey, Pennsylvania.
Sorry, this message is from Eli Spencer. Dear City Council, I write to applaud you and thank you for deciding to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. As somebody who has ancestors and relatives buried in the cemetery, I'm happy that they will soon rest in a more inclusive space. And as somebody whose family has lived in Lexington and Rockbridge County for five-plus generations, I'm happy that City Council is showing a willingness to listen to my black peers and tackle some of Lexington's longstanding injustices against the black community here. Sincerely, Eli Spencer.
This is from Kip Brooks of Lexington. Dear City Council, I deeply appreciate the openness with which you listen to all voices and the reflection leading to a swift decision to change the name of Lexington Cemetery. I support this change. Thank you.
A message from Robbie Gardner. Dear City Council members, my name is Robbie Gardner. I am twenty-three years old, and I've lived in Lexington since I was six years old. I write to thank you all for making the right decision to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This is a great first step towards making this community inclusive for everyone. There is more work to be done, but it is great to know we have a receptive City Council. Best, Robbie.
Excuse me. From Kelsey Vita. Dear members of the Lexington City Council, my name is Kelsey Vita. I am twenty-two years old, and I have lived in Lexington for most of my life. I write to thank you for voting to rename the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I know this was not an easy decision and that some members of our community do not agree with it. However, this was the right thing to do and is an important step in making Lexington a more just, more anti-racist place. Moving forward with this decision, even in the face of pushback, is urgent, and I am grateful that you have all taken a stand. Sincerely, Kelsey Vita.
A letter from Sam Spencer. Dear member of City Council, my name is Sam Spencer. I am twenty years old and have lived in Lexington on and off for twenty years. I applaud your vote to change the cemetery name. I think it's an important step towards further changing Lexington's culture in a positive way. Sincerely, Sam Spencer.
From Matthew Boyd. Dear City Council members, my name is Matthew Boyd. I am twenty years old and have lived in Lexington for seven years. I write to you to thank you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Upholding systems of white supremacy is so synonymous with the United States that people get upset when the tiniest notion of dismantling these systems make our town come undone. People would rather celebrate Confederates than recognize the centuries-long damage inflicted on the black communities' yikes. While I recognize the accomplishment of changing the cemetery's name, we must understand that this is a very small step down a very long road. Black people deserve better. Lexington deserves better. Matthew Boyd.
Dear members of City Council, my name is Violet Jettin. I am nineteen years old and have lived in Lexington for nineteen years. I write to you to applaud, thank you for, you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Erasing celebrated Confederate history is a first step in the right direction for our town and county. With this inciting change, we can move towards making a more inclusive and inviting space for marginalized groups in the community. Sincerely, Violet Jettin.
This is from Musa Kamara. Dear members of City Council, my name is Musa Kamara. I have lived in Rockbridge for about eighteen years. I write to applaud you all for making the choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I have to admit that before the decision was made, I was skeptical that any change would occur. It's amazing to see Lexington pleasantly surprise me, and although this is only a small first step, I think it's a significant one nonetheless. I understand that the backlash that members of this council will receive as a result of this decision will be fierce, but I am confident that the decision made was the correct one. Thank you for doing the right thing.
A message from Amber Poole. Lexington City Council, thank you for unanimously voting to move Lexington forward despite the backlash I'm sure you're receiving. Doing the right thing is never easy. Keep up the good work. Amber Poole.
From Christian Worth. Dear members of City Council, on behalf of our family who resides in the city of Lexington, we are grateful for the unanimous vote to rename the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. We look forward to supporting you in the work that remains to be done. Sincerely, Christian Worth.
From Hallie Klein. Dear members of City Council, my name is Hallie Klein. I am twenty-one years old, and I've lived in Lexington for the past fifteen years. I am writing to thank you for voting to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery on July second. This was absolutely the right decision, and it was meaningful to see your unanimous support for this change. Thank you for listening to the perspective shared by community members at the last meeting and responding with action. I hope that you take this affirmation as an encouragement to stand by your decision to change the name of the cemetery and invest in the continuous work of dismantling racism in Lexington. The City Council's decision on July second represents one of many necessary steps towards realizing that goal. Sincerely, Hallie Klein.
From Adam Saki. Dear members of Lexington City Council, my name is Adam. I am eighteen years old, and I have lived in Lexington my entire life. I write to you to applaud and thank you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is important that we not glorify and idolize those aspects of Lexington's history that are damaging and harmful, but instead work to address and understand said history. Renaming Stonewall Jackson Cemetery is a step in the right direction. Removing the names of Confederates who fought for the continued oppression of black Americans from landmarks and local institutions is crucial in making Lexington a welcoming place for all who visit. This is not the erasure of history, but the correction of a history written by the oppressors. Sincerely, Adam.
Dear City Council members, my name is Elizabeth McClung. I am fifteen years old, and I have lived in this county my entire life. I am writing to thank you all for choosing to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Your decision means a lot to me. While Lexington and the surrounding communities still have a lot of work to do in order to end Confederate romanticization, this is a great step in the right direction. Sincerely, Elizabeth McClung.
This is from Emma Spencer. Dear members of City Council, my name is Emma Spencer. I am twenty years old and have lived in Lexington for twenty years. I write to you to applaud and thank you for all, for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is important to me that they went through this, went through with this decision because I feel that it is an action that is a step forward to a better, inclusive community. Many thanks, Emma Spencer.
A message from Caroline McCain. Dear members of City Council, my name is Caroline McCain. I'm nineteen years old and have lived in Lexington for sixteen years. I write to you to thank you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I believe changing the name of the cemetery is an important step to take and will help stop the unneeded glorification of Confederate generals. This change will not erase history, as some claim, but will prevent us from only seeing the perspective that Jackson was a loyal soldier who deserves to be memorialized. By removing Jackson's name from the cemetery, we remember that the cause he was loyal to believed it was right and necessary to enslave, which is a cause that deserves no memorials. Sincerely, Caroline McCain.
From Chris Ritter. Dear members of City Council, my name is Chris Ritter. I'm twenty-one years old, and I've lived in Lexington for nearly all of my life. I'm writing to express my sincere appreciation for the council's decision to remove the name of Stonewall Jackson from our local cemetery. This is a decision in the best interest of all Lexingtonians and people of Rockbridge County who want a community that welcomes all people to enjoy the town that I love so much. I feel inspired by all the local supporters of this change, but I also feel inspired by the City Council members who worked hard to listen to the voices of its constituents late into the night and then ultimately decided to hear out those voices and make a change. Renaming the cemetery is not only the right thing to do, but it is also supported by an overwhelming number of Lexingtonians, as shown on the night of July second and into the morning of July third. In this moment, I am truly proud of my own, my town, its people, and of you, members of City Council. Let's continue to do this work together, preserve our history in a responsible way, and push Lexington to be the best that it can be. With love and gratitude, Chris Ritter.
From Jackie Arnold. Dear members of City Council, as a lifetime resident of Lexington, I am writing today to applaud and commend your decision to change the name of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I anticipate that there will be backlash for this decision, but I hope that will not influence your very correct decision to change the name. At your last meeting, I submitted a letter detailing why I felt this change was necessary, including the fact that my father is buried there. It is a huge relief to me that he will no longer be buried in a cemetery named after a Confederate soldier. I hope you all feel proud that you are part of a change that marks the beginning of a long journey toward making Lexington a more inclusive, diverse, and understanding city. Thank you for all you do. Sincerely, Jackie Arnold.
Next, a letter from Rachel Maxwell. Dear members of City Council, my name is Rachel Maxwell. I am nineteen years old, and I lived in Lexington for fifteen years. I am writing you to thank you for all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Your decision showed our community that you are committed to making Lexington a safe and inclusive place for everyone, one step at a time. I know that this decision has been and will continue to be met with opposition from some members of the community, but there will always be opposition to necessary change, especially change in the sphere of racial justice and equality. I am truly thankful that you have recognized the value in removing Stonewall Jackson's name from the cemetery, and I am looking forward to the day when all Confederate symbols and signs are no longer honored and displayed in Lexington City and Rockbridge County. Sincerely, Rachel Maxwell.
My name is Will Saki. I am twenty years old and have lived in Lexington for twenty years. I write to you to applaud, thank you for all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Sincerely, Will Sack, or Saki, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce Will slash thing. Saki, okay, thank you.
This is from Megan Walker. Dear members of City Council, my name is Megan Walker. I am nineteen years old and have lived in Lexington for twenty years. I write to applaud and thank you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This decision to rename the cemetery is very important to me because it shows not only myself, but the black community in Lexington, that the city stands with us in our case, in our cause to fight for justice. Being a native of Lexington, I have experienced several forms of racism and microaggressions while growing up here and during school. It is crucial to stand with this decision because it indicates that this action isn't for show, but that the city of Lexington sincerely and genuinely stands with the black community. I urge you all to continue making progress with the renaming of the cemetery. Once again, I thank you for making the right choice. Sincerely, Megan Walker.
Dear members of City Council, my name is McKelvey Courtney Collins. I'm nineteen years old and have lived in Lexington for eighteen years, leaving only to go to college. I write to thank you all for making the right decision to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This is but the first chapter in a new era for Lexington, and I'm glad we can make history in this way. Lexington is a unique town known for its history, but keeping up statues and naming landmarks for Confederate generals is not the right way to honor and reflect on that history. Instead, it sends us deeper into the past by promoting and engaging in lost cause narratives. I have loved my time in Lexington, but know that we can and should do better to ensure that we truly are a loving and welcoming community. I believe that renaming the cemetery is but the first action to take, and I'm glad, and I'm so glad, the City Council is taking this first step. Sincerely, McKelvey Courtney Collins.
You're still muted, Chuck.
Sorry about that, I hit my spacebar, but I guess it didn't. Hello, my name is Anna Cunningham. I would like, I would just like to thank you for renaming the cemetery. Wishing you all the best, Anna.
From Brooke Humphreys. Dear members of City Council, my name is Brooke Humphreys, and I am twenty years old. I have lived in Lexington for my entire pre-college life. I write to thank you for making the right decision to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. This decision is a step in the right direction for making Lexington, Virginia, a more welcoming place for all people, no matter their race or ethnicity. It comforts me that a Confederate general known for his support of human enslavement will no longer define this part of our community. I hope that similar changes will continue to occur to make Lexington more welcoming for residents and visitors alike. Sincerely, Brooke Humphreys.
Hi, my name is Ally Faff. Thank you so much for renaming the cemetery.
This message is from Jason Vess. Hello, I am writing you to ask if you know what removing history does. It makes people forget. Once the past is forgotten, you repeat it. Do not remove the statues and names. They are history whether you like it or not. Sincerely, Jason.
This is from Matthew Hypes. I wanted to take the time to send a quick thank you email to you and the City Council for taking the time at the last meeting to listen to all of the emails and comments about renaming the cemetery and then voting unanimously to change the name. I greatly appreciate that the council really listens and partners with the community. Together, we are striving to bring Lexington to a place where all its members feel known and celebrated. Your decision to change the name of the cemetery is a great step in the right direction. I know I am not alone when I saw we, the people of Lexington, are behind you and with you. Matthew Hypes.
A message from Clara Pickett. Hi, my name is Clara, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for deciding to change the name of the cemetery. This really means a lot, so thank you. Best, Clara Pickett.
From Isabel Richter. Dear council members, I'm writing to express my gratitude for the prompt decision you made to change the name of the former Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I know that while the decision may have been easy, the backlash you are facing is not. Thank you for the sign of your commitment to making Lexington a more welcoming place. Sincerely, Isabel Richter.
Dear City Council, my name is Sarah Basu Shahari, and I have lived in Lexington my entire life. I write to thank you for choosing to rename the cemetery. You made the right decision in choosing love over hate in our community and for supporting the fight against racism in Lexington. Sincerely, Sarah.
From Gus Spencer. Dear members of City Council, my name is Gus Spencer, and I am twenty-two years old. I have called Lexington my home for my entire life and have previous four generations on both sides of my family. I am writing to thank you all for your decision to change the name of Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. My relatives are buried there, and I so, and so I thank you for taking the time to hear from my My relatives are buried there and I so, and so I thank you for taking the time to hear from myself and others like me. This decision was long overdue and it is a small step toward making Lexington a more welcoming place for all. I hope that these actions may lay the foundation for more to follow, such as renaming the many streets in Lexington that bear the names of men who fought for the Confederacy. The names we choose for our institutions and streets reflect who we are as a community. Future generations will judge us for the decisions we make right now, and I hope that Lexington will continue to embrace this profound moment in history in a way that gives rise to meaningful change. Renaming the cemetery was a step in the right direction, but there is a lot of work still to be done. Thank you all, Gus Spencer.
This message is from Byron Winchester. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Byron Winchester, and I would just like to thank you all for your diligence in the renaming of the Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. Furthermore, I'd also like to thank you all for being so accessible to the residents of Lexington and engaging in a meaningful dialogue that encourages positive change for minority groups within the community. Thank you.
This is from Ron Fuchs. Thank you for forwarding my message and thanks to the council for voting to change the name. It is a good first step to showing that we are an inclusive community focusing on the future. Over the past few weeks, Confederate statues have come down in Richmond, including Stonewall Jackson's. The governor has called on school boards to take Confederate names off school, and Congress and the military are debating removing Confederate names from military bases. This is a national trend, and it is good that the city is in line with the rest of the country. Ron Fuchs.
Dear members of Lexington City Council, my name is Charlie Haywood. I am 22 years old and have lived in Lexington for 19 years. I am writing today to commend you for making the decision to rename the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. While some facets of this resolution may have posed uncertain ramifications for the council, it was both absolutely necessary and long overdue. It would be naive to think that such a decision would receive no pushback from some of the Lexington and Rutgers County community members. After all, change is often difficult and uncomfortable, but change is also a tool for creating better, more equitable societies. And in many instances, comfort and growth just don't coexist. Furthermore, to the members of the Lexington community who so blindly and vehemently oppose this change, I implore you to recognize that your discomfort about this change hails in comparison to the discomfort that the current misguided and unjust naming of the cemetery causes the black members of our community. An old Spanish proverb says that "A wise person changes their mind, a fool never will." Thank you, members of Lexington City Council, for being wise and listening to the voices of those hurting in your community. I am eager to learn about the cemetery's new, more inclusive name in the fall. Sincerely, Charlie Haywood.
From Sofia Carata. Dear members, dear members of City Council, my name is Sofia Carata. I am 20 years old and I have lived in Lexington, Rockbridge County for the last, for the past 15 years. I write today to thank you for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I am proud that Lexington is taking the first steps in removing symbols that venerate people that stood and fought for slavery. The city of Lexington has a lot of reckoning to do with how it presents itself in terms of the history it upholds and the ideals that it portrays. The Confederate history of Lexington belongs in a museum where Confederate sympathizers, many of who showed their true colors in the comments at the last City Council meeting, can view it if they wish. It does not belong in or on the city's cemeteries, street names, and buildings. Renaming Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery is important because it shows that Lexington is open to making the right changes that will serve to make it a more welcoming and less offensive place for the BIPOC. I don't know what the BI is.
It's Black, Indigenous, and/or people of color.
Thank you. I hope that you will all recognize the positive impact the name change will have on the community and turn your heads next to the numerous other symbols in the city that represent something our community should not stand for. Sincerely, Sofia Carata.
Dear members of City Council, my name is Allison Thomas. I am 19 years old and have lived in Lexington for my whole life. I write to you to applaud and thank you for, thank you all for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is so important to rename the cemetery in order to show respect and allyship, and I believe that it is a respectable decision. Although there was a considerable amount of backlash due to this decision, it was the first step to reshaping Lexington to be more reverent to our black community. Sincerely, Allison Thomas.
This is a note from Lily Youngman. Hi, my name is Lily. Thanks, thank you guys so much for renaming the cemetery.
Dear members of City Council, my name is Adama Kamara, and I was raised in Lexington and lived there for 14 years. I write to you to thank you all for allowing me the space to share my thoughts and the thoughts of my fellow community members at the City Council meeting on July 2nd and for subsequently making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. Growing up, a Lexington where I didn't have to be constantly surrounded by glorifications of this Confederacy through such monuments never seemed possible to me. I never thought anyone cared enough to even hear how those monuments affected me. Furthermore, I thought I was alone in thinking these things. This is why it was so wonderful to hear other people in the community express similar sentiments to mine, especially black community members. I will never forget Ms. Marilyn's reflection about what this moment meant to her. Her words were a powerful reminder of the weight many of us carry during our time in Lexington, often for years, and how important it is for us to stand up for what's right, even in the face of a great deal of backlash and hate. That you all listen to our concerns and acted accordingly is a step, albeit a small one, in the right direction. Some will minimize this moment as an erasure or destruction of history, but I argue that it is quite the contrary. Lexington is making history by acknowledging and attempting to reconcile the violence of the Confederacy. Sincerely, Adama K.
This is from O'Shawni Basu Chodri. Dear City Council members, my name is O'Shawni. I was born and raised in Lexington and have requested multiple times that Lexington discontinue its admiration of our Confederate past. I'm writing today to thank, to thank all of you for voting to change the name of the downtown cemetery two weeks ago. Last time I spoke to you, I quoted an excerpt from Alexander Stephens' cornerstone speech, which I mistakenly attributed to Jefferson Davis, sorry, in which the true purpose of the Confederacy, the perpetuation of racism and slavery, was laid bare. When you unanimously voted to remove a Confederate name from our cemetery, you sent the message that Lexington will no longer venerate a man who made every effort to protect this harmful and violent institution. I know that the aftermath of this decision has been anything but easy for you. Thank you for making the right choice despite the backlash you've endured. You don't deserve the threats and profane messages you've been receiving, but I appreciate that you are withstanding them nonetheless. I see and acknowledge your resilience in these historic times. With gratitude, O'Shawni.
My name is Jordan Arnold, and I'm a resident of Rockbridge County. I want to applaud you all for making the decision to change the name of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. As I have said in a previous comment, my father passed away in 2015, and he is buried in the downtown cemetery. This past Sunday, July 12th, was his birthday, so my mom and I visited his grave. It was truly special to visit his resting place and know that the name was being changed to something more in line with my family's values. Thank you all for making, taking this small but important step towards making our community a more welcoming place. Sincerely, Jordan.
From Grace Sailor. Dear members of City Council, my name is Grace Sailor and I grew up in Lexington. I'm currently a student at UVA. And between living in Lexington and Charlottesville, I've been witness to far too many to, I've been witness to far too many gross symbols of the Confederacy, slavery, and white supremacy. I wanted to write to you all today because I am so incredibly proud of my town for taking this step towards becoming a more inclusive and welcoming community. I fully support the decision to rename Stonewall Jackson Cemetery. I am also excited to see positive change happening in my little hometown. I'm proud of Lexington for choosing the comfort and safety of its residents over the glorification of the black community's oppressors. Thank you for listening to our community and especially for listening to the black people in our community and for committing to changing Lexington for the better. Best, Grace Sailor.
Dear City Council members, my name is Rosie Dixon and I graduated from RCHS in 2016. I lived in Rutgers County for about six years. I would like to personally thank you for, thank you all for voting to change the name of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I believe that this is a very necessary first step towards racial justice in Lexington. I have, I hope that you all continue to make significant progress towards a more welcoming city. Sincerely, Rosie.
From Emily Helwig, dear members of City Council, my name is Emily Helwig. I am 19 years old and I have lived in Lexington for around nine years. I am writing to applaud you for making the right choice to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. It is vital that we cease glorifying Confederate icons such as Stonewall Jackson, who championed principles of hate, violence, and cruelty. I am glad that with this decision, community members will be able to pass by this cemetery on their way into town or enter to mourn and honor their loved ones without immediately confronting the false narrative of heroism that surrounds Confederate generals. Lexington, Virginia has a long way to go in these efforts. However, I wholeheartedly believe that this is a step in the right direction. Sincerely, Emily Helwig.
This, hello, my name is Arden Courtney Collins. I'm going to be a junior at RCHS next year, and I have lived in Lexington my entire life. I would like to thank you for your recent decision to rename Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery. I've been surrounded by these monuments to the Confederacy for my entire life, and having them finally be removed gives me hope for the future. Removing these Confederate symbols from our town is a good way to start moving past the racism and white supremacy they represent. That being said, there's still a lot more work that, there's still a lot more that needs to be done. I would like to encourage the Lexington City Council to continue and change the name to streets named for Confederate generals and slave owners. This task is not as simple as changing the name of the cemetery, but it is nonetheless worth doing. The street names, much like the name Stonewall Jackson Cemetery, memorialize and celebrate the worst parts of our history. Slavery, racism, white supremacy, things that shouldn't be celebrated, leaving up tributes to the Confederacy prevents us from letting go of Lexington's racist past and moving forward to finally address the problems we have in our community. Lastly, I would like to remind the City Council that fighting racism in Lexington should not be limited to removing Confederate monuments. Lexington City Schools continue to teach Confederate lost cause narratives that excuse and sympathize with racists and slave owners instead of factually teaching history. In addition, the history and cultural contributions of black people and other minorities remain sidelined and forgotten in Lexington classrooms instead of being incorporated as an integral part of the curriculum. By failing to provide their students a well-rounded, unbiased education, Lexington City Schools are doing their students a great disservice. I would like to again applaud the actions that the City Council has taken so far, but hope this is just the beginning of the changes to come. Thank you for your time, Arden Courtney Collins.
This is from Tini Sun. Dear members of City Council, last week, I and many others wrote urging you to change the name of the cemetery. Then, we went back to our regular schedules. You, on the other hand, spent hours considering all the different viewpoints, weighed the costs of such a task, and ultimately bore the burden of such a controversial yet moral decision. All I can say is, thank you. I know that there are people being unkind and hateful to you. I admire your grace under such pressure. Tini Sun.
My name is Jake McDonald, and I'm a voter in Lexington. I would like to thank and applaud the members of Lexington City Council for voting to change the name of the local cemetery. This required brave action, and you positively responded to critiques of the cemetery's former name from locals who have grown up here, moved here, or lived here for generations. I hope that you will continue to pursue opportunities to change Confederate symbols in our town where appropriate. This is a small but important step in moving toward a more inclusive town. Best, Jake McDonald.
If Michael Humphrey hasn't joined us, I'll go ahead and read his comment. Okay, Michael Humphrey, how come a city like Lexington, Virginia is giving in to terrorist groups when this town has been living on the Southern heritage? That is why people come to this town. Remember what happened to the Red Roaster Restaurant? Think that was its name. Anyway, hope no more people come to spend money in your community. Y'all are destroying this country by doing this.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Council members, for reading all those into the record. I think, if I'm understanding correctly, that we have one individual who wanted to come in to speak to us. And Janie, is Ms. Vess, has she been able to join us?
She just read my message. I'm just waiting for her to pop up in the Zoom invite box.
Well, we're waiting for her. I'll make a couple of comments just in general as it relates to public comment. We do welcome any and all opinions, respectful opinions, and we listen to all voices and we're grateful for everyone who has written to council and has communicated with us either through this or through the Facebook Live chat feature. We have not chosen to make time to read all the Facebook messages into the record, but please rest assured that those will be included in our minutes for the record. They will be reflected when we go about approving our minutes, those Facebook notes, comments that I think were in excess of 500 at our last meeting will all be part of the record for our meetings. Also, just make everyone aware, if you did not hear your letter or email read this evening, our cutoff is 5 o'clock, and I think there are at least one or two that were received after 5 o'clock. Those will be read into the record at our next meeting. Council members have access to those now, but just as a matter of practice, we cut off the number of emails that we receive at 5 o'clock. And again, any new ones will be read at the subsequent meeting. And also, just for everyone's knowledge and circumstance, and we'll talk about later, we do have an item, agenda item of the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery name change, and that will continue on our agenda for the foreseeable future anticipated through and until an ordinance is adopted by City Council. So, Janie, did we have success with Ms. Vess joining us?
I am still waiting for her to pop up.
Okay. I'm not aware of any other comments, and I'm grateful again to council for reading those in and for all the people who took time to share their feelings and opinions. And we do welcome those at each and every one of our meetings under the citizens' remarks. I'm going to not close the citizens' remarks in case Ms. Vess is having a problem getting in on Zoom. We'll give her an opportunity to speak when she makes it. Janie, feel free to interrupt me if she should get to where she's joined us and prepared to speak. But the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, acknowledgement and receipt of the abstracts and votes for the June 2020 Republican primary election.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Ziegler and a second from Mr. Smith. Any, no discussion is consent agenda. And as for roll call vote, Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
The Senate?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Gayers?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we're grateful to the election officials and certainly the electoral board for putting that all together and running a good election and under certainly trying times between the rain and COVID and all the other obstacles. And hope that we have a lot of good best practices for our election in November, when certainly there will be a much higher participation with our citizens. Next item on the agenda, Boards and Commission Report, excuse me, Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery Name Change. I indicated three topics I hope that council will speak to. One is to help folks understand the process the council is embracing for the name change, the circumstances and appropriate ways for public to give input. And lastly, we'll call on the city attorney to explain the ordinance process and how we'll go about. And lastly, we'll call on the city attorney to explain the ordinance process and how we'll go about that. So it opened up for council members to discuss and or talk about the process relative to making this name change.
I guess I could start off by saying that this topic was given attention by council as a result of a large outcry from the public where we received thousands of names on petitions and hundreds of letters about changing the name. So we put it on the agenda to make some determinations. One of the first things that we considered was what the public has to say. So after making the decision to pursue this, we developed a survey to put online so that the general public could respond to let us know what their suggestions were for a name change. Then at the same time, we've been doing research. We have been working with the Historical Society, Washington and Lee University library archives through the Rockbridge County Courthouse and various other means of research to find out more about the Stonewall Jackson Memorial Cemetery as well as some additional history just for general knowledge about the two black cemeteries, the in Evergreen, the one that now exists as a result of transitioning from an original one into Evergreen for historical perspectives. So that research, of course, is ongoing and I would like to know if council would be ready for a work session on or about July 30th, which is about the time that the survey will end. So that we could make, perhaps make a selection and August the sixth of maybe the a particular number of of names that are under consideration and then vote on August 20th. That's just something I wanted to throw out as an idea for a process and determine if that is something that would work for all of us.
So have a name chosen by August, I'm getting to my calendar, I'm sorry.
Six, well.
Have a name chosen by August 6th?
A group of names, August 6th and vote on August 20th?
I imagine Jared will weigh in as far as the hearing and advertising and we need to jump through to make sure this happens the way it's supposed to.
Okay.
I'm fine with that timeline.
That that timeline works for passing an ordinance at the meeting on September 3rd. If there's a decision made at the meeting on August 20th, that will give us time to publish the ordinance and I guess in the twenty, the issue, the news gazette that goes out on the 26th. And then the hearing would be at the meeting and then presumably the vote on the ordinance would be at the meeting on September 3rd.
So to clarify, we would have to have the name chosen, not say a selection of three possible names by the August 20th date. Is that right?
If you want a final vote on September 3rd, that's correct.
I think that gives ample time for the community to to weigh in on on which name they like and I think that's a good process and I can meet next week if that's what we want to do or the 30th, that's what we want to do.
I'm in favor of that too. I think that's a good plan and I'll be here. We're available certainly on July 30th as well. I like the timeline and have it vote on or in place by early September.
And when are we shutting down the the survey? If we're meeting on the 30th, the 26th, or will we do it that day?
Was it announced that it would be the 30th already?
Janie, do you recall?
I think in our last council meeting, we we threw out the idea of a work session on the 30th and decided on the September 3rd as the the deadline date to change. I'm, I'm comfortable with I guess, ceasing input on the survey on the 26th, that'll give Janie and whoever enough time to, I think, compile the information to be shared on the 30th and or before the 30th, so we have something more concrete to discuss on the 30th.
I think that'll be fine, just so that, you know, we make sure that it's placed on the the survey as to any change that was made from the 30th to the 26th, if that's what it says.
What's, what's the rate of input right now, Janie? Is it still pretty steady or has it backed off quite a bit?
The first few days it was pretty good and it has drifted off quite a bit in the last few days.
Thank you.
So I would think if we change the timeline to the 26th, it should not have a negative effect on anything.
That that leaves 10 days from tonight to Sunday. I think that that's plenty of time to receive any additional input.
So we can, if there's a consensus, council would close the Survey Monkey, which is a means for receiving input on suggested names for the cemetery Sunday, Sunday, July 26th. And then council, further, we would have a public meeting on the 30th as a work session for the sole purpose to vet those names and sort through them. At that time, council would present the the number of recommendations that they had, number of participants in the survey and and all the the raw data for their review and consumption and potentially to select a name or our next scheduled meeting is the 6th. And as you heard, the city attorney, he would need direction from council no later than the 20th or second meeting in August to provide an ordinance for your consideration on September 3rd, which would be the act to actually change the name.
I would think if if I could add something, Mayor Friedman, if at that work session, that we could discuss the findings from the historical research for educational purposes?
Certainly, on the 30th?
Yes.
And can I also add that I know we're using the online kind of a survey tool to receive suggestions, but if folks are uncomfortable submitting them online, then of course they can, I guess they could, you know, mail it in, they guess they could contact any of us with a suggestion. I just don't want to miss if someone has inputs and they are not savvy using an online survey tool, if we miss a suggestion. Because I'd love to hear every suggestion.
I agree. I had that situation yesterday with somebody contacted me because they didn't want to get on the computer. It would be nice to know what what avenue we use to provide those names. Shall we give those to Janie?
If anyone can either do the Survey Monkey or deliver, deliver them to City Hall at the City Manager's Office.
Okay.
I think, or I'll remind people where in general, City Council is very welcome to communications and contact, so feel free to give us a call. Glad to connect or as David said, we want to hear what you have to say, what your ideas may be.
Can we just have them call City Hall?
Certainly. At four six two three seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Certainly. Unless there's any, does anyone have any else, anything else they want to mention or anticipate or expect from the process? If not, we'll, again, the Survey Monkey and also communications from individuals will be, will cease collection Sunday, the 26th of July and to be if you will, processed, processed and presented to council. What time did you want to meet on the 30th? And I presume that we would meet by Zoom.
About either five or seven.
Anyone have an objection to five o'clock?
No.
I would anticipate, depending upon the the volume of the historic information, the the meeting may not last more than an hour. We'll go as long as it takes, but just shaping expectations. So July 30th, five o'clock, any objections to that? And again, that will be live streamed on Facebook as well for anybody who wants to to join us. Again, it's a public meeting and we welcome folks. I don't anticipate having a public comment section in that meeting, but you'll get the opportunity to hear the data collected from the survey and council's thoughts and reactions to the recommendations and the the process for moving forward with a new name. And then again, the citizens will have the opportunity, as this will remain an agenda item on the August 6th and August 20th meetings as well.
Good.
I'll ask the city attorney if he has any thing that he thinks we may be missing from that perspective and to protect us from ourselves. Or if not.
I think that sounds like, that sounds like a good plan to have a final vote on September 3rd.
That was clearly the stated objective at the last meeting, so very good. I think we've addressed the the process, the format for public input and what's necessary for the ordinance. Unless anybody has any questions or concerns regarding the subject to the name change, we'll go into Boards and Commissions.
Before we do that, maybe remind the the public that's listening about the format of a work session.
If I'm, correct me if I'm not addressing the essence of your statement, but the work session at five o'clock on the 30th will be an opportunity for council to discuss the two issues, one on the agenda of historic information and the other of the Survey Monkey results and details. The process there is for council to talk amongst themselves. There'll be no action taken at that meeting, just simply look, working towards a consensus on a new name and moving forward in the process. It's also not an opportunity for public input, but gives you the opportunity to see the work that we do and how we go about it and discerning the items that'll be on the agenda.
That's what I was aiming at. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Greatly appreciated. Anything else? If not, we'll jump into Boards and Commissions and Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority did not have an official meeting in July. The Advisory Committee met last week, Monday, and we received a telephone call and a conference with representative from the Virginia Investment, Virginia Investment Pool where local governments and authorities can place money for investment. Right now, the assets we have in the Blue Ridge Resource Authority accounts are netting just barely more than than zero percent. So we're looking for a little more, a little higher rate on return and help shore our finances up for the long term.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions on the Blue Ridge Resource Authority? Hearing none, Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strawn?
Sure, we met on Tuesday and the relief fund update, that was the joint program with the Community Foundation of Rockbridge, Bath and Allegheny. Twenty one thousand dollars was distributed to 32 businesses to help them cope with revenue losses and it expenses as a result of COVID. Can you hear me? That the Lift Flex gift card program is ongoing. You can buy a $75 gift card package for only $65, so it's a great gift idea. In conjunction with the city and the IDA, Main Street is managing our Small Business Cares Grant Program. Fifty applications have been received and Main Street Lexington is no longer accepting applications. They're in the process of reviewing the applications and expect to award grants in the next couple of weeks. And you probably noticed a few empty storefronts downtown, but those spaces are filling up quickly, so watch for some new businesses downtown in the near future. The Main Street, Main Street conducted a community survey regarding safety precautions by businesses to respond to the pandemic. The key takeaway from the responses was that if businesses are following recommended COVID prevention precautions, citizens will patronize those businesses. And I think the business, all the businesses downtown are doing a very good job wearing masks. People can social distance it in the stores. Our annual retreat will be the first week of August, but this year it'll be virtual. And the Design Committee is working on mural guidelines. So far, one building owner has expressed an interest in having a mural. Restaurant Week is July 27th through August 2nd. Main Street will sponsor two $50 Main Street gift certificates for the winners of the drawing. So look online for what the specials, the businesses are running. And when you go into each business, you can fill out a little card that'll go into a drawing for the two gift, $50 gifts certificates. And our annual Get Downtown event will be virtual as well. That's what merchants will be asked to make short videos to share with the first year college students. And that's all I have. I think you're muted, Frank.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for that report, Leslie. Any questions for Leslie? Leslie, one question I had, it seems like Main Street Lexington was targeting a thousand Lift Flex. And we've not reached that goal yet.
We have not. And you know what? They, I don't think we got an update on where we're at with.
Keep, keep ordering them until we get there. So is the real message. So everyone who's on Facebook Live or otherwise, please show your support for downtown Lexington or friends and neighbors who are merchants and go and purchase one of the Lift Flex packages to support our our local businesses. Thank you, Leslie. Planning Commission.
We met last Thursday and WNL gave a presentation on the changes that their potential changes they may may be making to their master plan. And a couple of items that came out at that meeting, they said that their target is October of 2020 for approval by the trustees. And then their plan will come to the Planning Commission for approval of their master plan. They'll be reopening Evan Hall, Evans Hall temporarily due to COVID because they need extra food service space with the social distancing. And WNL would like to bring an edited plan to the Planning Commission for review in late summer, early fall. And again, that won't be for approval. It's for them to get feedback before they take a final plan to their trustees and then back to Planning Commission and council for approval of their master plan. We had our organizational meeting and we elected John Driscoll as the Chair of the Planning Commission and Pat Bradley will be the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And then we worked on the comprehensive plan. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Leslie? Thank you for that update on the Planning Commission and Godspeed. We look forward to a conclusion, rapid conclusion of the comprehensive plan. I know you all have been working diligently on it for quite some time. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers?
Yeah, Regional Tourism met Wednesday, July 15th and got a report about the PACT program, Protect All Citizens and Travelers. I've been mentioning this. And you may have seen those. I've been mentioning this and you may have seen those packed symbols on the 15 Lexington businesses that have already signed up for the program. Just a reminder, this program is basically free advertising to the businesses that, that are involved. Virginia Tourism is going to spotlight PACT and other similar local programs for statewide advertising. And Regional Tourism starts its PACT Facebook campaign starting August 1st. So if you're a business in town and you're interested in this program, you can find more information at LexingtonVirginia.com/pact. Or if you just want to figure out which businesses have signed up, the directory is there. Want to mention Regional Tourism's, sorry, that's my dog. Regional Tourism's Marketing Director, Patty Williams, has applied for a $10,000 grant from Virginia Tourism Corporation through its new Wander Love Grant Program. This program, they're, they're going to give out 50 awards to, to communities in Virginia. And if we receive it, that money is to be used for marketing campaigns featuring specifically outdoor activities in our community. And those will then be rolled up into Virginia Tourism's Wander Love Campaign, which provides travel inspiration for epic Virginia road trips. A couple of reports on the visitor center. First off, all three visitor centers are now opened. Natural Bridge and Buena Vista are open 11 to 3 on weekends and Lexington's regular hours of Monday through Friday, 8, 8 to 5 and Saturday and Sunday, 11 to 3. And according to Tourism Director Jean Clark, traffic is increasing and the past few weeks have averaged in the Lexington Visitor Center of about 30 visitors a day, which is better than she was expecting at this stage. So that's good news. Other encouraging signs that tourism is starting to pick up in our area. National Bridge State Park, the week of July 4th, had over 7,000 paid visitors, which is roughly on par with what they had last year. Also wedding business is starting to come back, albeit smaller weddings. This past weekend, the seclusion wedding venue at House Mountain Inn each hosted events. And if anybody has any questions, otherwise that's it.
Thank you, Dennis. And thank you to Tourism for being proactive on the PACT program and ensuring best practices for folks visiting our community and for workers as well. Department of Social Services.
Yes, um, the board met yesterday at the Rockbridge County Administration Building. Two board members conferenced in by telephone, but we were, but they were not able to vote because we don't have a policy in place for voting by teleconference. So we're going to have our lawyer draw up a policy to allow that and have that ready for approval at our next meeting. This meeting was John Butler's last meeting and John has served on the board since September 2016 and he served as Chair also since September 2018. He's moving out of the area to Clifton Forge and therefore unable to continue in his role in the board representing Buena Vista. The board approved unanimously the appointment of Mike Gilmore as Chair and Michelle Watkins as Vice Chair. And we expect Buena Vista will appoint very soon a Buena Vista representative to fill John Butler's slot. And then Rockbridge County Supervisors also reappointed Tony McFadden to a four-year term. Dinah, the, the Executive Director, she distributed the final financial report for the fiscal year ending May 2020. And fortunately, all ended well, which we knew, no surprises and behind budget and there were no additional localities, monies needed to cover expenses or overages. And then when we were reviewing the workload report was noted that the Child Protective Services, I think I had mentioned this in my last meeting, I think COVID-19 is, you know, certainly having some impact. There's been an increase of nine referrals to 22 new referrals now compared to, we said nine more than compared to last month. And we also added six cases under care from the prior month, the total now of 63 cases under care. This is again, Dinah thinks, and the staff think the add stress on vulnerable families and the lack of school and daycare services. Hopefully with school coming, coming up and having a somewhat reopening, this will improve things. This is still better though. I was looking back at the numbers. We had back in April of 2019, 55 new cases compared to the 22 now. And then we had also 120 open cases in May of 2019 compared to the 63 we have now. Also, in terms of the benefits, we saw an increase in Medicaid in June and Medicaid applications. And again, I, I don't think that should be a surprise considering unemployment and more people probably, you know, losing jobs and having no insurance. Um, the office is open to the public half days right now, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 12:30. Dinah expects that to continue through the month of August. And then the update on the building project, so the board approved the RFP for the office space to lease for the agency, it's approximately 10,000 square feet starting April 1st, 2022 and before five to 10 years with all options considered. And that would be office product, retail product or built to suit opportunities with parking for 60 plus spaces. Landon Hinton from Seven Hills Advisors, this is Baskerville. Using their services, he's going to be our broker, working on our behalf for, you know, reviewing those proposals and when they come in. And this will be, should be advertised, we should see it in this Sunday's additions in Roanoke, Harrisonburg, Charlottesville. And then we're going to also place it in News Gazette for two weeks. And then after our closed session, we came out and voted to take in five children into care from Rockbridge County. That's my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Lots going on and glad to see the, the work and progress that you're making on housing of the, the work.
Thank you.
Rockbridge Area Recreation Organization, Mr. Ziegler.
Uh, the RARO Board of Directors met last Wednesday, July 8th. You know, we continue to take reser, uh, signups for the fall sports. Your guess is as good as mine if we'll be able to play them, but I think a lot of folks are, are seeing that VHSL that governs the Virginia's high school sports has three options to play fall sports and none of them include football. But we continue to hold out hope that, that we can do something for our local youth with some of our programs in, in the fall, but we're still taking the registrations. The RARO staff, we are losing Brian Cruz, who we recently had brought on nine months ago. He took a full-time job elsewhere in Rockbridge County. He had worked for RARO for nine months, but he'd actually also worked for the city for a long time. And so he's been a great supporter of RARO for a long, long time in both capacities. We'll miss him, but his expertise in field turf and management of our fields will still hopefully gloss, glean some of that from him. This means that just by some attrition by John Trudgen's retirement and then Brian's departure, that we are going to have some savings just in personnel costs. We also expect that we'll continue to have some savings if we don't play sports in the fall just of regular, you know, program costs. So we'll continue, you know, it's really important to the board that, that our staff does their part to not incur unnecessary expenditures. Also to maintain operations that, so that when we can ramp back up and, and serve our kids, that they're ready to go. Couple of things I'll point out that the staff has been putting some just short videos online just to stay in front of families of drills and a couple of local soccer celebrities. Sofia Vargas and Liliana Vargas did some drills yesterday that were posted, so that's excellent. Those are two great soccer players and of course their sister also plays D1 at BMI. But so great drills that, that RARO put up there. But you know, you might remember that we do play our football with the Allegheny Youth Football League. So we're keeping an eye on what they're doing for, for some of their older kids. Our, our younger kids that play football play here locally, but our older kids do play in that league. So we're, we're just hoping for the best, but safety's the number one priority. And I can take any questions that you may have. Oh, one more thing. We have had the help of Jared Jenkins and also I think Vicki Huffman has helped from the county tightening up some of our, you know, RARO bylaws and so on. This is a project that we actually really worked on extensively a, a year or so ago or two years ago. And we're, we're, we're double checking and making sure that we've crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is, that everyone has approved them. And so actually what we have found that we do want to bring some slight changes, some, some modifications to, to what we operate under. And we will be bringing that to the localities after we make some, make some changes or make, do some approvals. So that's just something that will be in the future. That's my report.
Thank you, David. And if you could, where did you say Brian Cruz is heading?
I didn't say, but he is going to be serving Rockbridge County still because he's going to work for Bark. So he's staying in the area luckily and like I said, he's certified to take care of some of the grass and some of the playing surfaces. He's got some expertise and so he'll still hopefully be able to, to help us keep an eye on some of our fields.
Terrific. Appreciate his talents and wish him all the best as he embarks on that career. And thank you for your service on the RARO Board. It's a, a very tough time where everybody's ready to get fired up for the fall sports and just not able to given the, the current circumstances. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold has not met, but we did receive the draft copy of the Lexington Historic Resources Chapter for the COT Plan in preparation for a near future meeting.
Excellent. Let us know when that meeting's taking place so folks can participate and learn more about the good work that Threshold does. Thank you. For my report, have a variety of topics and a couple of appointments. First and foremost, the, just wanted to affirm for everyone that I did in fact was ill last week and determined after testing, I tested positive for COVID. So all the folks that suggested that we're following a bad practice of not meeting in person, I'm elated that we didn't meet together in person on July 2nd because infecting someone you know, a friend or family or someone you love that, that may be compromised, getting, the thought of them getting infected with COVID is a frightening and horrible circumstance. Also having COVID and being knocked down and for lack of better terminology, being down and out for a week is, is not a whole lot of fun either. So I implore people to continue to wear masks, stay home when you can. You can't get it if you're not out and about. And it is again, very real. Anyone who wants all the gory details, give me a call, I'll discuss them with you. But I do think it's important that we realize this is not a, or this is a very equal opportunity virus. It doesn't matter your zip code, it doesn't matter your political preference. Anyone is susceptible to it and it's having, coming on the, the upside of having it encourage you to exercise great caution and work towards avoiding it at all, at all costs, if at all possible. Along those lines, because I was down and out, I am grossly behind on emails. So I want to personally and publicly apologize to anyone who hasn't heard from me. Typically, if you haven't heard from me within 24 hours, I didn't get your message on the phone or on email, but I'm grossly behind on emails. And if there's something out there that you're awaiting a response, please contact me again if it's a timely issue. You may have read and I hope you're aware and I hope that you will join me in celebrating and congratulating Ann Parker and Teddy Gottwald and the whole team at the Georgias for amazing recognition that they have. Travel and Leisure listed the top 100 hotels in the world and the Georgias came in at number 53 worldwide and number two in the US. So amazing. And I personally knew they're a gem and do a beautiful job. And I think that Lexington is the center of the universe. But congratulations and great work to the team of the Georgias for the recognition from travel and leisure. If you have, haven't been quarantining as I have, you will stumble upon paving improvements and very grateful to Jeff Martone and his team and the work that's going on and smoothing things out downtown. Thank you for your patience as a community, as we work through getting the roads in better shape after all the construction we had last summer. Doesn't it seem like a lifetime ago that the Main Street had a gaping hole in it and dust was flying and businesses were basically shut down because of the miserable construction project? What a difference a year makes. Also wanted to give a shout out and appreciation to Forest Swimming and to all the people that are involved as well as the YMCA for our city pool being functional and people enjoying it this summer. I saw some pictures online and I was exceedingly jealous seeing people enjoying the cool water at the swimming pool. So encourage people to, as they can, get out and with proper physical distancing, enjoy the, the pool, city pool being run currently this summer by Forest Swimming. In communication with the city manager, I think the community festival was being worked on and going to happen. I think it's been delayed at this point. I don't know that it's been canceled, but there were folks that were inquiring about that and wanted to communicate that the, at this point, the community festival has been delayed and more to come on that when we get more from the organizers for approvals. And I think the last thing for me is this morning I attended a VML Legislative Conference or Committee Meeting via Zoom. There were a multitude of topics, many of which I won't get into. I forwarded to City Council a financial update from Jim Regimbold, who's a forecaster for the, a couple of organizations in the state. And anybody who'd like to receive a copy, just contact Janie or myself and we'll get you a copy of it. But amazing information of the, the current status of the financial situation for the state of Virginia and obviously for the municipalities. One of the major takeaways was that job growth through February had been about 1.3% in the Commonwealth. In May, it was down on average 9%. When you break it down into the different subsects of businesses, state government was down 7.6%. Leisure was down 41.6% and federal was actually plus 0.8. Jim pointed out that in the Golden Crescent up near DC in Northern Virginia, a huge piece of our economy is the, the federal government. And also indicated that there were approximately 400,000 people still unemployed as of May reporting. The average decline in, one of the measurements is payroll withholding. And from April 1st to May 31st, the average decline was 3.8%, which as far as the, the dollar collected amount. And then sales collections, March was up 8%. June was up a paltry 1% over 2019, which is fairly remarkable when you think about where we are. Jim further talked about 2021, 2022, the biennium, anticipating about a $2.5 billion loss. They've located about 1.3 billion with items that they've removed from the budget and 300 million that was planned for reserves in the rainy day fund. And then unallocated funding also accounted for a, a big piece, the $1.3 billion. When you look at our population of the state of Virginia, 52% of taxpayers make less than $50,000. But that attributes or counts approximately 9% of all taxes collected. But that attributes or counts approximately 9% of all taxes collected. Just interesting numbers when you look at how it balances out. And the last thing I would reference from that meeting was information relative to the CARES funding and additional, what that will look like. And the city manager will get into it more in his report. But the 649,000 approximately dollars that we received and that the CARES Committee of Leslie and David worked with on how we would allocate those dollars. That was the first half of the state CARES allocation. The state is still sitting on, I believe it's $400 million of additional funding, which we would receive potentially another $649,000 to utilize in our community. There's some question as to the wisdom or what, how the state will use that and whether or not they'll push it to the localities. And as you might guess, VML was advocating that we contact our local legislators and let them know that we would like for them to push that on down to the local level. So I share that with you. Glad to take on any questions. And we'll just reaffirm for everyone's safety and health, we will continue for the foreseeable future to meet via Zoom. I realize it precludes some people who do not have computers or internet access. Facebook Live can, it can be picked up and people can also listen into the meetings from recordings through electronic basis as well. But I can assure you, there's no one more eager to meet in person than me. And I look forward to the day that we can sit at a table and take, take care of the business of our community and welcome our community to our meeting in person. With that, I'd like to call on the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. A number of items on COVID I'd like to update you on. First, that you should know that federal funding for lost local revenues is being discussed by a number of national, regional, state organizations that serve and support local government. And they petitioned Congress for funding specifically to replace these lost revenues due to COVID-19. Organizations that are represented include the National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, United States Conference of Mayors, International City County Management Association, the Council of State Governments, National Conference of State Legislators, and National Governors Association. Also signing in support of this are nearly four pages of local, state, and regional organizations and associations. Our local Institutes of Higher Education is a subgroup that have been working closely with local government partners coordinate their COVID response activities and plans to reopen the fall. Representatives on the IHG Committee are Dean Sidney Evans from WLU, Mr. Bill Braddy from SVU, Colonel J. Williams from BMI, and Mr. James Cook from Dabby Lancaster. The individual plans for our local educational entities are noted on the schools' websites. And I listed those websites in my report, but you can find those websites in other locations as well. Dealing with local cases here in our area, cases continue to increase within the county and two cities. But VDH does continue our, characterize our area as a low case area. However, there appears to be a breakout in the Glasgow area and perhaps associated with a significant local business there. The local VDH has, the Department of Health has characterized it as a warm spot and is actively monitoring it and providing support to the business and community. Dr. Carnegie from VDH is heading up the response there and coordinating with Rockbridge County staff to communicate and coordinate a response. VDH is planning on asking the local government or COVID Task Force to provide support for a testing operation in Glasgow on 7/24, July 24th. Across the nation and state, while cases continue to rise with more available testing, hospitalizations, severity of illness and death as a percentage of all cases are falling. VDH noted that testing locally and in the state is entering the testing 2.0 phase. Testing will not be provided on a mass basis and in general, testing will only occur if symptoms of COVID are present. However, tests are readily available. Many of us probably heard the July 14th Governor's briefing, but some of the points that should be made is case numbers are increasing statewide as testing increases. On a regional basis, differences are very evident. Enforcement of restrictions will increase, in particular in Eastern Virginia and Hampton Roads. Three state agencies have been tasked to enforce business guidelines and mask wearing with an emphasis on the eastern region of the state. Alcohol sales will cease at 11:00 PM daily. Beach access plans will be reviewed and evaluated. The Federal Emergency Management Association has delivered infrared thermometers to distribute it to local businesses. These will be given out by local emergency management staff to priority businesses. 27 thermometers were delivered to our area. Such businesses by priority include essential critical infrastructure workers within a high person-to-person contract environment. Businesses and sites within a high person-to-person contact environment such as gyms, salons, YMCA's, houses of worship that were required to shut down as a result of Executive Order 53. State and local offices that support the reopening of business and community services with a high personal, a high person-to-person contact environment. Other workplaces within a high person-to-person contact environment will also be included. As I said, 27 touchless thermometers were received yesterday. Fire and EMS staff will buy and install batteries and distribute them in the community as provided by the guidance above. City school needs, the city schools are coordinating, or city staff is coordinating with city schools to fulfill a desperate need for sanitizing wipes within the city school system. As the mayor noted, the community festival, which was planned and delayed, has now been canceled for the 2020 year due to COVID, and they will plan on the festival again in 2021. That's all I have for COVID. Does anyone have questions on the COVID topic? Hearing none, I'm going to brief on the uses of CARES funds. Additional CARES funds, and again, the mayor touched on this and really wrapped it up pretty adequately. There are $400 million still in the state coffers that may be distributed to state, to local governments. The state is under no obligation, however, to distribute those funds. So the Virginia Municipal League is asking us all to participate in informing our members of the General Assembly and petitioning the governor to allocate at least a portion of those funds to local government, governments, because we can distribute those funds in our community as we best know. And the state is not as adequately prepared or sensitive to those local needs. So that's about where that issue stands. They've got to make a decision, I believe, in the month of August. So time is short and we should be in touch and watch the VML announcements as to how we can help. The Community Foundation has prepared their applications for award of the funds set aside for support for community organizations that provide COVID relief. They have a standing awards committee in place with a process outline for receiving and evaluating funding requests. The applications for the first round of awards are due August 14th. If all funds are not awarded, the first round and second round will be considered in the fall. City, city facilities update, the hands-free door at City Hall has been installed and works well. Other doors are scheduled to be installed next week at the police department in the Piovano Building for Rara and in the Raro Building. 75% of touchless faucets and fixtures have been delivered with some installed and others to be installed by DPW as time permits. The city's HVAC system systems are being evaluated for ion disinfecting units and the units needed will be ordered this week. Facilities improvements came in, $4,111 in excess of funds allocated. And this amount will come from the 10% contingency that has been put in place. School uses, the city schools have used 100% of their funds as specified and requested by the schools. City supplies are on hand and in good stock and we are allocating those as needed throughout the city and to other agencies who are our partners. Any questions on the CARES funding? Okay. As we know, there was a justice demonstration that was requested for July 25th, Saturday, the 25th. The individual making that request has not followed up and the request is not going to happen therefore. It would have had to been available to you tonight to approve, shut down the streets. The information that was provided was not timely or thorough, and so we could not proceed. As a matter of update, this request has not been pursued by the petitioner, but both BMI and the city have reached out to Mr. Caleb Tucker, who is the petitioner, and indicated we are happy to work with him should he desire to hold the event later, at a later date. Boxer Wood locally is through the city applying for a backyard composting grant. The city had to submit this grant. I signed it and it's a prevention and recycling competitive grant offered by the Department of Environmental Quality. And Boxer Wood would put this program in place. The program will attempt to convert a household waste food compost, food waste to a compost and keep it out of the waste stream. This is a pilot only with the goals of gathering data on household food waste, keeping it out of the waste stream and creating capacity for composting by households within our area. The program and grant application was completed by Boxer Wood and the grant application is for $10,000. The total program cost is $15,000 and locally Boxer Wood is providing $4,500 of in-kind match. And the city is, city is providing $500 in in-kind labor. And those are all the other topics that I have to share with you this evening, if you have any other questions about these topics or any other topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I'm going to go backwards for a second because I started to, my throat was drying out and I needed a cough drop, but I forgot to bring forward some appointments for your consideration this evening. We have a multitude. I'll take an opportunity to make a small commercial and invite people again on Facebook or otherwise. Most of our boards and commissions do require a city residency, but we invite you to apply online or in person for positions that we have available, serving on boards and commissions. And in no particular order, wanted to bring forward first the ARB. We have a four-year term beginning July 1 of 2020 and ending July 30, 2024. And Arthur Bartonstein is a candidate for that position.
I move to approve Arthur Bartonstein appointment to the ARB for a four-year term effective immediately, ending May 1, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Hens.
Back it.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none would ask for roll call vote. Mr. Smith? Mr. Ziegler? Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
I'm sorry. I think I said the term wrong. I was reading something else. Can I redo that?
Well, let me just affirm, we're voting for, for your term beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2024.
Yeah, I was reading something below that by accident. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for the clarification. And your vote, vote is?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
And Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Think I got everybody? Very good. Thank you, and we appreciate Arthur's continued support. We have Bruce Summers, who was appointed at a prior meeting. And Bruce wanted to finish the work he had been doing relative to the CARES Act. And he's finishing a four-year, we're looking for someone to finish his four-year term ending May 1, 2024 and effective immediately. We also have Katie Schester's prior position that has not been filled. It would be effective immediately and ending May 1, 2024. We had four candidates. Camille Miller, Molly McClure, John King, and Afshad Irani. And indicated to council for transparency, I had contacted Camille about her desire and application for the Planning Commission and asked her about her interest and willingness to serve on the IDA. And she said she would be willing to do so. That's why you didn't see an application specific for the IDA in your packet. She's committed to seeing through the Comp Plan to its conclusion and most likely will step off of the Planning Commission after that's completed. And then we also will have a, we had a resignation from Dick Halseth effective July 31st and we'll take up his appointment at our August meeting. So tonight, looking for the candidates, Camille Miller, Molly McClure, John King, and Afshad Irani as the candidates for the two positions available.
I move that we appoint Afshad Irani and Camille Miller to the two vacant positions on the Industrial Development Authority for, for your terms beginning immediately.
And ending May 1, 2024.
Sorry, and ending May 1, 2024.
Back it.
Ms. Alexander with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none asked for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Your ears?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler? Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Additionally, we have a position for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2024 for the library board and a candidate in Alex Brown.
I move that we reappoint Alex Brown to the library board for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Actually, 2024.
I'm sorry, 2024.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Alex Brown for the library board signify, I'm sorry, roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler? Aye. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And last for your consideration, our candidates for the Planning Commission terms beginning August 1 of 2020 and ending July 31st, 2024. Two positions and the two candidates are Camille Miller and Pat Bradley.
I move to appoint Camille Miller and Pat Bradley to each to a four-year term beginning August 1st to 2020 and ending July 31st, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much for your patience with my throat and thank you to the, the folks that are preparing to serve. I reached out to most all of these candidates and had a chance to talk with them. And they're excited about their, the opportunity to serve the city. And in reflection, very thankful for Bruce Summers and his leadership on the IDA, serving as chair and Katie Schester's service as well. So thank you to all the folks that serve on our boards and commissions and carry on the, the business of the city. The next item, I believe, is a report from the city, city attorney.
Just have a brief update on the Water Tower property declaratory judgment. We had a hearing last Thursday at which Rusty Ford, the, one of the respondents in the case was sort of ordered to either hire a new attorney or proceed on his own. So there is some movement on that front and we currently have a status conference set for September 3rd at 9:30. And hopefully at that point, we will set what will hopefully be a final schedule in terms of getting an actual trial date. So hopefully on September 3rd, I guess it'll be that morning at the September 3rd meeting, I'll be able to update council on a, an actual timeframe for when we should have a decision in the case. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Jaren. Anxious to make, make some progress and I'm sure the developer is eager to move, move forward with the Water Tower development as well, long, long in coming, to be sure.
And, and just on that point, Jim and I have been in touch with the developer and our and are keeping him apprised of the schedule slow that it might be.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Hope, hope he continues the same enthusiasm with which he started the project and glad, glad to be partnering with Edwin Gaskin. Is there any new business to come before the council this evening?
I, I had a question for the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of things moving slowly, where is the opioid litigation standing right now? I know it's been a while since we talked about that. Popped in my head and was curious to ask.
Slow is a understatement on that. Things are currently, I'm sure it just says everywhere have slowed down to a crawl just with the pandemic. But the latest update that is moving forward is one of the producers, I believe it's Purdue, that filed for bankruptcy. All of the municipalities are submitting their proof of claim for losses going back to 2007, I believe, and the bankruptcy proceeding, those are all due at the end of the month. Actually just approved today for our outside counsel, the city's proof of claim, which at this point is not atypically just listed as unable to reasonably ascertain the damages. So it's basically sort of a placeholder for the bankruptcy proceeding. But it doesn't appear that there's going to be much movement anytime soon, one way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Jared, for the update. And again, amazing how things can change in a year. Anything else for the good of the cause for city council this evening? When we last met on July 2nd, I closed the meeting with a quote from Dorothy Canfield Fisher that I didn't realize the significance it would have here a couple of weeks later. And I'll share it with you again. "It is not good for all your wishes to be filled. Through sickness, we recognize the value of health. Through evil, the value of good. Through hunger, the value of food. And through exertion, the value of rest." And I read that to you at the conclusion of our meeting, which was actually July 3rd, close to 1 o'clock, if I remember correctly. And encourage you all to, to rest up and to be well. Recovering from COVID, definitely appreciate the, the value of health. And I'm grateful for the work that all of you do for our city and with the effort. And I do bid you good health, good rest, good values and good food. And we will stand adjourned and look forward to convening on the, at our next meet, or actually the next meeting will be work session at 5 o'clock on July 30th. Thank you all very much and have a great night.
Thank you. Take care.